I call the meeting up. The Cleveland Heights University High School Board to order. Mr. Gaynor, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobal.
Here.
Ms. Pepler.
Here.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Mr. Zucker.
Here.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion to approve minutes from November 3rd, November 19th, and December 2nd.
December 2nd.
Any corrections? Okay, Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Okay, that gets us to awards and recognitions.
Tonight, we have three recognitions. These recognitions represent what's so inspirational about this district. A school community making great measures to ensure student success, global-minded students, and committed transportation department that understands the responsibility of carrying out precious cargo to and from school every day. So first, I'd like to start with Canterbury. Canterbury, come on up. So I'd first like to recognize Canterbury Elementary School. Canterbury has been named a High Progress School of Honor by the Ohio Department of Education. The High Progress School of... All right. So the High Progress School of Honor program recognizes schools with a high percentage of students from an economical disadvantaged background that demonstrates sustained progress by all students in reading and math over a five-year time period. Based on a 2013-14 Ohio School Report Card for Math and Reading, Canterbury Elementary showed consistent progress in raising math and reading skills for all student groups. Only 27 other schools in the entire state earned this distinction. This recognition shows that Canterbury's staff and family have high expectations for their students. The teachers support our students, and you, the parents, this award also reflect...is a reflection of your volunteer hours and the support you give to our students at home. So at this time, we have Erica Wigden, Kristin Waif, along with the representative from the staff, staff members, raise your hands, PTA, and parents, please accept your certificate of recognition from Board President Ron Register. And if we have any other Canterbury supporters, please come forward. And let's give a round of applause to them. Next to our students, I would like to commend our Cleveland Heights High School students for participating in the Cleveland Council Award Affairs Autumn Model United Nations Conference this October. So Heights High was one of 11 schools that participated in the small school division. I'm proud to say that Heights High took second place. The conferences are stimulations of the committee, work done with the United Nations. Students take on a delegate role of a country in research how best to represent the interests of the country on specific issues. They exercise critical thinking skills about current events, topics, diplomacy, and they also use debating skills to draft resolutions in hopes of gaining committee approval. Their hard work is paid off with the help of a model UN advisor, Karen Bauer Blazer. Heights High delegates won the following: three Superior Delegate Awards in the UN's Children's Funds Committee, four Position Paper Awards in the UN World Health Organization, and the UN Commission on the Status of Women, and two honorary mentions in the Commission of the Status of Women and the UN Commission on Narcotic Drugs. Would you, Karen Bauer Blazer, is she here? And your students, please come forth and accept your certificate of recognition, and then please join Ron Register and me in the front to take a group picture. So let's give them a hand, please. We know you have some important intellectual pursuits ahead of you tonight. So again, congratulations. Last but certainly not least, we have transportation. So our bus drivers and transportation department have committed to the upkeep of our buses so that our students can travel safely to and from school every day. The Ohio Department of Public Safety has recognized the Cleveland Heights University Heights Transportation Department as one of the best inspectees in its annual school bus inspections for the 2014-15 school year. Our transportation department continuously displays professionalism and pride in maintaining its fleet of school buses. At this time, with Scott Smith, transportation supervisor, please come forward to receive your certificate of recognition, and then move to the front. We can take a photo with Board President and myself. So that would conclude our recognitions tonight. Thank you all, and you definitely make this district proud.
Requested audience, I think Jones Spurrel. Is that it? Thank you too. Okay.
So, good evening. I'm Jones Spurrel, and I have a son at Roxborough Elementary, and I am here tonight to thank Dr. Dixon, and Dr. Jeff Johnston, and the nursing staff, and Jeff Johnston's staff, for listening to my request and adopting food allergy guidelines as recommended by the CDC. It's a great beginning. I really appreciate it, and I know there's going to be some bumps along the road. There already have been a couple for some food allergic kids, but it feels so good to have a policy in place and to be on a trajectory of making progress in a way that's going to benefit all of the students in the district. And the policy is going to facilitate a change of culture around these issues and keep children safe. So I'm so happy to be here to thank you. And I don't know if you all saw it in the paper today, but do you know what the Merriam-Webster Word of the Year is? Did you guys see that? It's culture. And I was going to use it tonight, and I did. So just as the food allergy policy is supporting a change in the culture among everyone in the school buildings, I wanted to just reiterate my suggestion that you adopt policies relating to sustainability and to the things I've brought up before about using non-toxic materials in the buildings and protecting children's health in terms of, you know, non-toxic cleaning materials, because I know a lot of that, there's been attention to that, but until you have a policy in place, it's hard to ensure that change in culture or to support that change in culture. So, and of course, I recommend a sustainability administrator, as well as you know, but, you know, you can start with the policy and then you make your progress in steps. So thanks so much again to Dr. Johnston and his staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Dixon.
So I would like to turn your attention to another reason we're celebrating this season, and it's here with me as your new superintendent. We've made it through our first 100 days together. So with that, I would like to present to you a short eight-minute-long video that will help encapsulate the spirit with which I came to this district and the exciting and rewarding experience it has been, meeting staff, families, students, and engaged community members. Accompanied this video is also a First 100 Days report, which details my learning curve since arrival. I have a copy of the report here for you. You'll be able to also access the report on the district website under the About menu on the homepage, and there, under the Item Superintendent, you would find this downloadable file and the video shown tonight. So let's have a look at the video, and afterwards, I will highlight some of the major takeaways from the first wonderful 100 days. First, thank you so much to the Board of Education and to the community for selecting me as your new superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. I'm delighted to be among the first to welcome Dr. Dixon to the community this evening.
I want to welcome Dr. Dixon on behalf of the City of Cleveland Heights and his mayor of Cleveland Heights to our community.
To Dr. Dixon. Looking forward to working with you. We've already talked about getting together.
I feel enriched with all the wonderful information I received this evening, and I learned even more than I had when I came in. So thank you for all the information of how this community is really thriving and wants
I remember the Saturday when I received the calls, when they offered me the job. I was actually at work, and I was sitting at my desk, and I got the phone call, and there was on the speakerphone, and my heart just fell because I said, either this, they're saying they want me, or they don't. And when they said that they want me to lead the school district, I was elated. And I said, they had enough faith in me to say that you can do this, do this, and we believe in you and we support you. So I really am excited about working with all five of them and really understanding the differences and knowing what their individual focuses are. And what I found is they all want what's best for this community. They've all embraced this community, they live in this community, and I do too. So that is...that's wonderful. And presiding over the board meetings has been interesting as well, because I've never sat in this chair, but I have the faith and the support of the board, and with that support, it makes it even better. The first 100 days have been a learning curve for me, learning about the district, the district expectations, the district goals, what they've set in the last few years. That's based on the facility, master facilities plan, and making sure that that is done with The coffee clashes have been so informative. This learning about the organizations and meeting the people that are part of those organizations have really informed me on what is important to the stakeholders in this city.
At the one-on-one level with teachers, we do, like, we can go into classrooms and model instructional strategies, or we meet one-on-one with them.
I am going to provide a symbolic gesture of passing the torch to you by removing my district lapel pin and placing it on your lapel.
I've had the opportunity not to just go in school buildings, but to really embrace the entire community. Cleveland Heights University Heights community has been...they've embraced me, I feel. They've opened up their minds and hearts to a different pathway to making sure that our students get the best learning opportunity that we know that we can afford them in Cleveland Heights University High School districts. I believe that our organization has to focus on student performance, and to do that, we put goals in place for academic achievement for all students. So for example, we're looking at our programs evaluations this year, what programs that we're doing well and what programs that we need to stop doing, and why.
Good morning, and welcome to the 2014-15 school year. I am thrilled to introduce myself as your new superintendent, Talisa Dixon.
It wasn't a rah-rah, we've done so many things well, but it was more of an intimate conversation to say that we have ways to go, or we can do it if we intentionally focus on student outcomes.
I was taking responsibility for my actions and my learning. I aspire others to do their best by leading good examples.
Actually, I came to Oxford and met with the third graders. So I came in, and the students all had these phenomenal questions for me to answer. Some of the students have traveled abroad, some of them are in the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts troops, and they really had some great questions for me. So that told me, you know, these kids are smart, and what can we do to make sure that we engage in them and that their outcomes match what I see every day. Those have been so exciting, to be on the playgrounds with the parents and the kids.
Well, it's good to see everybody, and we are so happy to be here because it is our first regular board meeting for our new superintendent, Dr. Talisa Dixon.
So what I've done with the team so far is just listen. I've expanded the cabinet to get different perspectives of what's happening in the district so together, we can build a common vision around what should happen for students. So we all come from different perspectives, and I don't know it all and don't profess to know it all, so I value the team and value those opinions, but I want to make sure that the team understands that it's about student achievement. It has to only be about student achievement, and I think we're on our way.
We have two recognitions tonight. And I plan to be here for a long time, but I want us to work together, and are you ready?
Yes.
I'm ready. Thank you. So I would like to extend a special thanks to Cynthia Barnes and the Communications Department for her terrific videography. She did a great job capturing the enthusiasm I have about being here in the district, and also to Angie and Camilla. As mentioned, there was a report documenting my activities and learning experience since August 1st, and I want to give you a kind of bullet point of list of what I would be able to...what you will read in that report. So first, my goals were to gain the district oversight by gathering opportunities to complete information, identify and understand clearly the challenges facing the district, determine priorities and responsibilities, develop effective relationships, host opportunities to meet district students and staff, and engage the community during the new transition. So I did this by going into classrooms and working with students, teachers, and families, meeting with student groups, reviewing student academic achievement data, meeting with parents and booster groups, meeting weekly with central office directors, hosting Friday morning coffee clashes to engage community and parent groups in conversation, engaging in personal interviews with local leadership and district partners, meeting with other area educators and superintendents, providing opportunities to engage with district staff, meeting with union representatives, and a whole lot more. So the big takeaways from this time period is that our children, they want to learn. They need to be engaged, and they are up for the challenge to meet our higher expectations. Our families, when engaged, can do a lot to build a bridge of school to home, so there is a continuity in higher expectations, and we need to find opportunities to capitalize on this, to close what I call is the awareness gap. And there is potential for closing achievement gaps, and each school's culture needs to be taken into account when deciding on an execution plan. And this will come under consideration when we begin creating our upcoming five-year strategic plan. Our teachers are committed to our students. We need to spend more time on professional development and supporting one another in areas that would be of greatest impact to student achievement. I'm also interested in seeing that disciplinary patterns change by universally setting higher expectations, and we're going to work, and we're all going to work together toward that goal. So as we move away from small school structure to high school and set up a temporary Heights High on the Wiley campus, we have an opportunity to stop doing what is not working and enhance our programming, our programs and offerings, and you're going to hear a little bit about that later. And we're going to seize this opportunity. Our community members and community groups are passionate and dedicated to supporting our schools. Cleveland Heights University Heights are continuing to see the unfolded through the master facilities plan, and we have their support and will continue to work in collaboration with them to ensure that we're all on the same route to success for our community as a whole. So you can, of course, find all this information from the report and again, on the website. The learning and connections that I've been able to establish with me as the district embarks on creating a strategic plan in the coming five years. This is going to be a collaborative effort, which is necessary when taken into account the experience, the knowledge, and the talents of many educators, families, and community members that we all have as available for resources. We'll be bringing in a nationally renowned education strategy firm to aid us in this endeavor, and we will commence our work beginning in January. So I'm looking forward to tapping into the rich culture that has made this district such great in the past, but I'm also looking to shake things up a little bit and to rock the boat and push us to reach our full potential. So thank you so much, and this concludes my First 100 Day Report. So next, we'll have...
Well, we are glad to recognize that you completed your 100 days, and we're really happy that you have enjoyed you for that long.
Oh, thank you.
But I think the board really appreciates the fact that you've been here and that you've plowed into the work, and you have a great understanding of it, so we don't want you to just tell us something and then not take our accolades for you as well. Anybody have other things they want to say?
I've been particularly impressed with your willingness and desire, and it seems like you really very much enjoy getting to know the broader community and developing relationships with people in the community, and that's what's real, I think, will be one of the keys to your success.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I know you like to get something done, so we can move on to the rest of your report now.
Okay, so next, we're going to have a report, a high school update, a course update. So you know, as I stated earlier, we're doing away with small schools and moving to Heights High, so we really wanted to update you about what that curriculum and the courses will look like as we move forward. So we have our curriculum director, Sandy Womack, along with our coordinator and our ed services, Bob Swagger, who will present our next steps of what those courses are going to look like for next year. Mr. Womack?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to review this information with us. As a curriculum director, my first 100 days as well, I've had a chance to work with Mr. Bob Swagger. He's done a phenomenal job in trying to make sure our educational program meets the standards and the criteria that's necessary for Cleveland Heights High School. One of the things we had to look at were our courses and our course offerings. Mr. Swagger did a phenomenal job of looking at those courses and trying to ensure that we had courses that met the academic criteria as well as the advanced placement program needs of the students and the honors program needs of the students. Mr. Swagger will move forward with the PowerPoint, and then I'll jump in as needed. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we definitely wanted to provide an update to the board, let them know how we're progressing with the courses for our transitions page at Wiley, and really just let you know how we've been planning and moving forward with the transition plan on the academic side. We do have a couple of...I'm sorry, that is backwards. But we do have some recommendations that...
Could you speak up a little more?
Sure. We were...we have some recommendations from the ed services side that we would like to...some input on. Most of these recommendations really align with new testing from ODE. Those include modifying some of our semester offerings in order to have year-long offerings. That year-long offering really allows our students to go in-depth with the material in order to, one, perform well on those end-of-course assessments, as well as give our students and our teachers the opportunity to really make sure that the content is learned at a very deep level. So some of the things that we may have been really moving quickly through in a semester, now they become high-stakes testing areas from the state, and so we're really looking for a modification of those courses so we can go into the amount of depth that our students need in order to be successful. Specifically, we're looking at moving these courses listed above to a year-long offering. US Government and Financial Literacy. I think you've heard me talk before to you about financial literacy is a requirement for graduation. We have placed it in the government course. That government course is now a tested area from the state of Ohio. So by opening up this course to be a year-long offering, I think that we can manage to meet the testing requirements and the financial literacy requirements. AP US Government is the same thing. One of the things that out of ed services we've been really trying to focus on is making sure that students who take AP courses sit for those AP exams, that that becomes part of the requirement of that course. And so again, as we're upping the rigor, upping the ante for our students in those courses, we also need to provide them the ample opportunity to really learn the course content. So you can see that reflected in the AP US Government course. So you can see that reflected in the AP U.S. Government course, our AP Psychology course, AP Economics, and the AP Comparative Politics, which, based on enrollment, we've been running those as every-other-year offerings, and we will continue to do so. We just want to make sure that the scope of that course aligns with the amount of information students need to understand. We have some additional recommendations, modifying an existing offering. I was, before you, I believe last year or two years ago, we created several fourth-year math options for our students at the high school because we went from three requirements in math to four requirements in math. So we have lots of different options in order for our students to take that fourth-year math. In implementing those courses, we have also learned that there's a lot more similarities than differences, and so this modification really is just condensing two courses back into one. So we are not going to offer mathematical models and applications, but we will offer mathematical decision-making, which is currently on the books. We just are not going to need to offer the mathematical models and applications. Also, when we're thinking about our English electives, I'm sorry, our English requirements, we see that we offer English III as, in addition to many other honors or AP-level English courses. So what the recommendation that we are looking to make is that we will not offer an honors English III, but instead those students that are pursuing that level of rigor would be encouraged to take one of our AP offerings that would occur at that same time. So this would be the AP Language and Composition, or College Composition 1 and 2, which is currently a dual-credit course where students earn high school credit as well as college credit. But again, when they're taking those more rigorous offerings, that that seems to be a little redundant in order to offer honors English III as well, while we're really getting our students ready to take those college-level courses. Also, we would like to say that courses with less than 15 enrolled students be offered on every-other-year rotation. That's actually not a change in our policy, that's something that we do, but again, when we're thinking about what does that look like for our students, we want to make sure that, again, we keep this in the foreground as we're thinking about how do we serve the student need at our high school. And I think that this precipitates us, making sure that we are very consistent with, it takes a lot of resources in order to run courses with very few number of students, and we want to maximize our space, we want to maximize our teaching staff, and we want to maximize our offerings. So this really isn't a modification, but more just a reiteration of a priority. You have been familiarized with the graduation requirements from the state of Ohio. Those are the new graduation requirements for the class of 2018 and beyond. Some of the things that the state has asked us to look at is how do we get students to fulfill graduation requirements through end-of-course testing, as well as some career technical education certifications. So this next part of our presentation is really just to provide an update about how are we thinking about that? What does it look like for us to explore college credit plus programming with Tri-C and Cleveland State University, as some of our career tech education programs are really being spelled out? And so, as you can see, and the people in the audience can see, that our unchanged graduation requirements versus the end-of-course, including the end-of-course assessments that need to be taken at the end of certain courses, and then we also have the opportunity for students to earn that high school diploma through our career tech education certifications. So we have been exploring college credit plus partnerships with, Tri-C has been one of our major partners, but we also have the PSEO, which is the Post-Secondary Enrollment Option Program, that we will continue to offer with some of our other partners like Cleveland State, we have some students that are at Case Western Reserve. So all of our area colleges, we want to explore this college credit plus. And I think at this point in time, Mr. Womack can share a little bit more around the college credit plus partnerships.
The new college credit plus program was signed into effect with House Bill 47 in June of 2014. And what college credit plus really does, it replaces the traditional post-secondary education option as well as dual enrollment. Governor Kasich intends to ensure that all colleges, as opposed to students who have traditionally been able to just pick up courses in piecemeal, have an opportunity to have a specific pathway. So all of the public colleges in the state of Ohio will be participating, they're required to participate, it's to be implemented fully in 2015, 2016. We've been working with Tri-C, Mrs. Cersey has met with the, one of the counselors at Notre Dame, and the goal of the program is, once our students have a chance to pick up some college courses that go towards a specific degree. So the goal would be a 15-credit-hour pathway or a 30-credit-hour pathway. Now you have what's called articulated agreement, articulated credits, and transcribed credits. One of the things about college credit plus is all of these will be transcribed credits. For example, if I take an advanced placement class and I score a 3, 4, or 5, that's an articulated credit. If I choose to go to college, I will get that college credit, but if I don't, it's just on my transcript as a 3, 4, or 5, may not even get the college credit. With a transcribed credit, every course that you take at a university is on a transcript, and it can be articulated throughout the state of Ohio, so they call CTAG courses. Those college credits will go to any state school. So one of the things that we've been working with, Tri-C, meeting with Cleveland State and other universities, is what do your pathways look like? Many universities have not articulated their pathways yet, most of the community colleges have. They have until about February 2015, according to Rebecca White from the Ohio Board of Regents, in order to accomplish this, because we have to list these course offerings on our course pathways as well. So therefore, our students can start choosing them, and they have to choose by March the 30th. So the state of Ohio is getting us the information as we speak, but we have been going out on our own to ensure that we have meeting with colleges right now to find out what's in place. As a matter of fact, in February this year, there will be a college night, so the colleges that we're working with will have a chance to talk about their college credit plus pathways. There'll be 15-hour pathways, there'll be 30-hour pathways, but they go towards a specific degree.
Up on the screen, you can see some of our best thinking and some of the collaboration with our partners at Tri-C, thinking about what do these different pathways look like? There's the Associate of Arts pathway. We also have the Baccalaureate Transfer Pathway around the Associate of Science. And then one of the other ones that they have worked specifically with our school to potentially put into play is something around hospitality management. We have listened to some of the board presentations around what could it look like to have a culinary arts program, and they even said, well, we might be able to assist and be a partner in that. So again, these are just some draft ideas that we've been fleshing out, we've been thinking about with our Tri-C partners. They're very excited because they said lots of people have contacted us in order to start this ball rolling, but very few people come to the table knowing what it is that they want it to look like. So they actually have been starting to have other conversations with local area school districts, and are using some of our best thinking to form those partnerships and the relationships with other schools. So that seemed to be very positive for us as a district, as we want to be out there defining and helping define with our college partners what these pathways look like.
And there are also several private colleges as well, who have the option of opt-in. If you're receiving any state or federal funds in order to pay for your post-secondary education option, which is now CCP, those colleges are obligated if they choose to take PSEO, or excuse me, CCP, in order to opt into the program, and also provide us with 15-hour pathways as well as 30-credit-hour pathways.
What does the, why would some classes be yes and some no under tag course?
So those are courses from the university that have that accreditation that goes with any Ohio university. So some of them just are usually in specialty programs, and so therefore, they might not transfer as easily, versus like English 10-10 is pretty consistent across the states. Are there any other additional questions about this before I move on to the other bullet So one of the other components is thinking, what does our course sequencing look like for incoming freshmen next year? As we're thinking about having a focus on student performance outcomes, just like what Dr. Dixon has said, is that we are focusing on academic outcomes. We want to think, how do we get our ninth-grade students into our academic program so we can guarantee that they have got the opportunity to graduate on time with the credits that they need? In order to do that, we've been thinking, how do we streamline some of those courses? How do we manage our resources in order to provide teachers, high-quality teachers, focusing on certain subject areas? And so this has been a draft that we are continuing to work on for what the class of 2019 and beyond will start to follow. This is not changing the sequence of courses for our current sophomores, juniors, or seniors, or even freshmen for that matter. This is really about something that we can phase in as we move our current eighth graders into our high school program. In order to take advantage of some of the college credit plus offerings or the career tech programs, we've got to make sure that students are following a very specific program, because we are building these things, and if we don't build the path for them, that they're not going to gain access to them. So part of that is being very specific about what we allow our freshmen to take as core classes, what we allow them to take as elective classes, in order for them to really move into these programs that are being specially designed. You can see that here about our ninth-grade offerings. Some of the highlights include not wavering. Right now, we offer physical science and biology as a ninth-grade offering. That makes it very challenging when you're thinking about how students are progressing through that sequence. So we're recommending that next year's ninth graders take biology or honors biology, and you can see that played out through ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade, thinking about how do we get kids to, or students to upper-level offerings, college credit plus offerings, AP offerings. So we really want to try and help define the course of action that students are going to take in order to get there. We also want to make sure we don't lose sight of our honors diploma, and so that way, students and families coming in in the ninth grade, they can see, what does it take for me to earn an honors diploma from the state of Ohio? What does it take for me to be part of the career technical education program? And so we can really see that plotted out right here as students begin their four-year high school planning. You can see how this works out to the 11th and 12th grade years. Again, this is, these are changes that would take place with next year's freshmen. This is not a change of what's happening to our current high school students. Again, this is not really something that we're looking for, you know, an approval or a modification, but we do want to make you aware, because there are obviously some impacts. When we start looking at taking a semester offering and moving it to a year-long offering, there's a push and pull, so we really want to make sure that that is something that we start communicating, that people understand the rationale behind why we would make that change, and then we can see the grand plan for how students coming in in ninth grade can really start to access some of the specialty programs that we're building right now.
And maybe some of them are just for when you come back or when you, as you develop it further, but you mentioned AP and trying to get more people to sit for the test. There is a financial burden associated with that, given that the tests do have an expense to them, and many of the students who take one take many, they may take five, and that, you know, $85, $90 a pop. So is there any thought to how to address that?
We sat down and talked with Dr. Dixon about that obligation, and it looks like that we'll be picking up the burden or the responsibility to ensure that every student who takes an AP course, if our expectation is that they will take that test, that we provide whatever resources are necessary to ensure that our students are able to take the AP in the course exams, it's an expectation.
Right, and then sort of related to that, but only vaguely related, I suppose, but you were talking about sequencing, and you also talked about the, what we currently do, which is courses less than 15, offering every other year. I'm personally fine with all those things. It suggests to me a level of ed counseling that is going to be needed for the students, because especially if a course is offered every other year, it may be something that a student is really interested in, and they may not realize that the timing is going to be very critical. And sequencing, again, you know, it really, you're going to, it would seem to me important to be sure that the students understand how this sequencing is going to help them to be more successful, not just on testing really. I think this is much more about how to get them the skills they need to be successful in life than more than just successful on tests, so.
And I can address a little bit about the four-year planning. This last year, second semester, we implemented a program that a lot of the inner-ring districts use. It's called NAVYONs, and it really helps counselors have a lot of access, a lot more access to students, and increase that communication between parents, students, and counselors. One of the components of NAVYON system is the four-year high school planner, which really allows counselors to sit down with students as they're coming into ninth grade to really sketch out what it would look like for their four-year plan. Obviously, we need to make some modifications to that plan as students change their interest or they decide that they want to take other courses, but the thing that we have with that tool now that we may not have had in the past is a record of what our original plan was going to be. It's much easier to modify a plan than it is to constantly create a new plan. So I think that one of the things we're looking at doing is how do we start to make that tool be really useful for us as we use the college plan, or I'm sorry, the high school planning tools, beginning in their ninth-grade year. Some of the resources could even dip down into our middle schools, so we could even start developing that plan. As some of our college career partners, it's possible for students to take those courses in ninth grade. So we really need to make sure that those tools span to our middle school counselors as well, so we can do that six-year planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you're going to introduce.
Okay, next we have Dr. Wiley, who'll come up and do our first reading of our NEOLA policies, updates, and recommendations. Dr. Wiley?
Superintendent Dixon, President, Register, distinguished board members. This will be the first of three readings of the 2014 NEOLA policy updates, volume 33, number one. The policies consist of new and revised updates for consideration. There were no replacement policies at this time. You received an overview of the policies and most recently, the actual vetted recommendations. Are there any questions during this first reading?
When, when do you expect to have the second reading? Got any idea?
That's a discussion that I'll probably have with Dr. Dixon, but it'll probably be around January.
Well, we'll probably have a full-blown work session for that, right?
Is that how you've conducted?
Well, we're taking some time to go through, so that we can, you know, sort of see and understand those changes.
I'm sorry, I missed what you, what your answer was. When, when did you say?
We were hoping around January.
I guess for us, it's typically dependent on what the heft of the changes and the updates are. I mean, I'm not sure we need a full, based on your summary, I'm not sure we need a full work session on these changes. What do, what do the rest of you think?
I don't care whether we have a full work session or not. I do have a number of questions, so it will take a while for me to, I mean, no longer than three hours, I'm sure, to do my questions, but I don't, we can begin to do those tonight. We can set aside time in January, whenever it works for everybody involved, I'm fine with, but I do have questions.
Well, that's something I made that maybe we're not going to do it tonight, but, I mean, we could if somebody...
I don't know if there's a better time. I mean, that's the question, is it, will January, will there be a free hour in January that there isn't tonight, or is, or is this, is it always going to be like, I mean, I just, I can't.
I would think we're better off to take a look at our schedule. I mean, the first three to four months of next year are going to be pretty crazy. I think we're better off to step back, find a good slot, you know, basically, if we're doing multiple readings, find some slots that are not when it's going to be five other items on the agenda, so that we're not here until 10 o'clock. So I would suggest we just take a look, have staff figure out that calendar for the first four months and find a couple of good dates to sort of drop this in, because this isn't, I don't, I don't think this is as time-sensitive as some of the other things that we do have to work on.
I don't know. Would you agree with that, Dr. Wiley or Dr. Dixon, in terms of timing, that it can be pushed a few months?
I'm just saying, we don't have to make the decision tonight.
Well, I do know that we have some policies that might need to go into effect earlier than others, but... than others, but surely, coming back in the next school, I mean, in January, if we can find some time to, take as much time as you need for us to answer questions, go through the policy, I'm prepared to do that, with the support of Dr. Dixon.
So, we can take an hour in our next, in our January meeting? We just?
It's fine with me.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Will that count as the second read, then?
Yeah.
Or is this, okay, so this still is the first read?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And what may help to board members, if maybe we kind of, if you have any questions that we need some further thought, maybe email them to me. Any questions about anyone, so we can give some additional information, if you think it may take longer than an hour, or if that works.
It'd be a good idea to do that anyway.
And then, that way, Dr. Wiley will have it upfront, and then, we can, is that okay? With everyone? Okay. So, we'll do that, Dr. Wiley. We have to email any questions. So, we just have some approvals of three, some field trips?
Four now.
Do we have to do one at a time? Can we do them all together?
Okay.
Okay. Then I'll accept a motion to approve the four field trips on the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion, highlights?
I, it's just a, a typo on the actual, our agenda, it has Bemidji, Massachusetts, and it's Minnesota, even though the form was, was correct, just to highlight that for the, for the agenda.
Do it in there.
I've been to Bemidji. Has anybody else been to Bemidji? Okay.
Mr. Gaynor.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Koble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dixon. I'll accept a motion to approve E. one through three personnel. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Is there, we, we can't take four and five?
Can't take what?
Four and five together.
Well, yeah, we can take four and five, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay.
So, could we amend that motion?
Is there a motion to amend that? So, I'll make the motion?
You can just, you can have a friendly amend.
We didn't, we didn't have a first and a second on the motion at all, so, so it's okay.
We didn't?
No, you did.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I missed that, and that was thirty seconds ago?
And I think you were the one that did.
That's very sad.
I'd like to make an addendum of four and five to the motion. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
There you go.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Koble.
Yes.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
Okay. That moves us to finance. Mr. Gaynor, you've got some.
One through four.
Let me take one through four together. I'll accept a motion for F. one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question, recommendation to reverse donation?
Yes.
What's that mean?
We are returning the donation for the Noble Playground.
To who, like, or why?
Back to Noble PTA.
Okay. Is there a reason?
I'll defer on that.
Right. Go ahead.
It was dedicated towards playground work, and they'd like to have the opportunity to rededicate it to some other purpose.
Oh, they want to re, they want to repurpose the money? Okay, gotcha, okay.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Koble.
Yes.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Okay, four needs to be taken alone.
Five.
I mean, five needs to be taken by itself, right?
Yes.
I'll accept a motion for the addendum, through the Milliken purch, Milliken Purchase Agreement. So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gaynor, you want to address?
We have before you an addendum to the agreement of purchase and sale of Milliken with Mosdose, and what this does is simply grants a thirty-day extension to Mosdose, so that the one section in Section Eight changes to say that the title shall transfer on the date of closing, which shall not occur, which shall occur not later than January sixteen, two thousand and fifteen. And we have legal counsel from Mosdose is here, if you have any questions, or. They also provided a letter, a cover letter, that indicated their progress to this point, and, and some of the reasons that a thirty-day extension would be in order.
We're not anticipating any additional required, requests for extension? This is?
You want to, we could invite Mr. Rappi.
If anyone wants to answer the question.
Would you come up? I think there's a couple of questions. Okay.
So, this thirty days, thirty days from now, we're out the door, everything's done, correct?
Hope so. I think so.
Well, I mean, I mean.
Thing has been going on long enough, I think everybody's kind of ready to be done with it. We had, as I tried to explain in the letter, a lot of things that we had to look into, some of which were unexpected. That always happens. When we originally set up the purchase agreement, we picked a hundred and twenty days, we decided we had to have some deadline, couldn't have it just completely open-ended. But I think we assumed even back then that it was a possibility, due to unforeseen circumstances, that things might stretch out a little bit longer. In fact, it did. We're now very confident we could do things within the next thirty days. We've, we've already set up an escrow. We've already done the title work. So, really, what we need at this point are two things, well, three things. One thing we need is, we need a point-of-sale inspection, and I'm told that will take about a week. And we have a form that's signed by Mr. Shergollis, that would authorize us to make the application if the extension is granted, so we can get that up and running within the next couple of days. The second thing is availability of funds. We have elected to do that without doing what we originally intended to do, which was to try to fold the financing around the acquisition and the payment for the facility. We're going to buy a facility upfront. The other thing that's involved, as you probably recall, is that there were contingencies. Those are really, to some extent, still in process. The financing contingency will become irrelevant. The contingency that was based upon getting a conditional use permit, we're prepared to waive, because that would take probably a two-month period to get into the cycle and get that approved. And we're very confident that we're going to get a conditional use permit. I think the risk of not getting it is very minimal at this point. The two other contingencies, you might recall, one was the easement of access to the stables. That has been a matter that's been under discussion. We put your staff people in contact with a specific person, so that that could be negotiated, and that's been under discussion. And my understanding is, the discussion's been fruitful, but we haven't been directly involved in it. The fourth contingency was relocation of the tradespeople. And I'm advised by your counsel that that's not going to be a holdup, as far as closing this matter is concerned. But once again, that's not something we've been directly involved in. So, the bottom line is, we're confident at this point in time that there's nothing that would prevent us from closing within a thirty-day period.
Okay.
Does that sound optimistic?
I just, thirty days, that's, I mean, I can't speak for my colleagues, but that's, that'll be, you know, on top of a hundred and twenty. So, I think the board and the community are anxious to have this resolved one way or the other, as opposed to kicking the can down the road another thirty, sixty, ninety days. So, I'm, I'm very hopeful that we're gonna have something, everything done, and a big check from, you know, Publishers Clearinghouse, or whomever, in the next thirty days.
Well, Mr. Silverman, I can tell you that it's been a long time since I've been involved. It was a longer time before I got involved. I really believe that everybody, everybody wants a scene end to this, and to see something productive moving forward. So, I'm, I'm here tonight because I'm confident that it will move forward. If we, if my clients were, at this point, willing to walk away from the project, I wouldn't be here.
That was it for me, Mr. President.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Koble.
Yes.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gaynor, as the forum, I'm going to be walking out with, I'll be contacting the escrow agent and the city of Cleveland Heights in the next couple of days, and we'll get the ball rolling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what you do with the money when you get it, I'm sure you'll discuss.
Thank you. I think the next, we have a lay finance committee report, and the chairman could not be here tonight, so I think Mr. Gaynor is prepared to read it.
Correct. The lay finance committee did meet, I'm not remembering the specific date of that meeting, but it was a few weeks ago. The full committee met, and we had some conversation about, it was primarily a review of the five-year forecast, which we typically have the lay finance committee do. They looked at the five-year forecast, they looked at the assumptions that were there, and this is the report that they had from that. So, let me read it to you. It's, it's a little lengthy, but I'll try to be quick here. So, Jane Geneva, who is the chair of the lay finance committee, writes, "This is not a political piece. Instead, it is a call to the reality of school funding. Politics does, however, necessarily enter into the report of the lay finance committee. The convoluted funding mechanism of public school education in Ohio was found to be unconstitutional by the Ohio Supreme Court in nineteen ninety-seven. At that time, the court encouraged the legislature to change the funding system in Ohio, but to date, it has not chosen to create a more reliable, systematic, and equal funding system for Ohio's children. Where does that leave the children of Ohio's six hundred and twelve public education districts? These students are forced to perform in an ever-changing testing system, where the bar keeps being raised almost every year, as funding cuts at the state level force local districts to ask for local money to continue the task of educating our children. And this scenario is the backdrop to the report of the, of the lay finance committee. The committee has once again reviewed the forecast of expenses and income for our CHUH school district, and found that to continue the education of our students, we will need to place a levy on the ballot in calendar year two thousand and fifteen. How can that be, you ask? We just passed a bond issue. Clearly, the passage of the bond issue indicates that as citizens of Cleveland Heights and University Heights, we are concerned about our students receiving an excellent education in surroundings that most benefit their learning experience. But that bond issue was for the buildings, not for the teaching and maintenance that take place inside them. The bond money can only be used for the buildings. Operational funds must be voted to cover the cost of the educational process. Under the current funding mechanism in Ohio, school districts are forced, in fact, expected to go to the voters every several years to ask for money to fund the education of their students. And as the number of our, as the numbers for our district indicate, we must go to the ballot again in two thousand and fifteen to accomplish our goal of providing a worthwhile education for our young citizens. The lay finance committee members met and reviewed our expected expenses over the next several years, along with the anticipated receipts from outside sources, the state and property taxes, et cetera. In the past, our committee's delving into individual expenditures and numbers has taught us that we cannot spin gold into straw. The uncomfortable position we find ourselves in is similar to that of other districts. We must repeatedly go to the ballot. Many of our income streams have been decreased. Much of a school district's funding is based on property taxes, a situation which currently, which presents two problems. Collection of taxes is down from around ninety-four percent a few years ago to just over ninety percent currently, and foreclosures on houses that are still a major issue in both our cities. These factors mean a decrease is available, unavailable dollars for our district. Furthermore, the tangible personal property tax was reduced by two percent per year over a period of twelve years at the state level. This tax was eliminated in two thousand and nine, and the lost revenue to districts was to be reimbursed by the state and phased out over seven years. The current reimbursement to our district was reduced from two-point-two million and two-hundred-and-sixty, to two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, and is expected to remain at this level for the foreseeable future. State funding has decreased in fiscal year two thousand and twelve due to a loss of federal stimulus funds previously provided in foundation payments. We do expect this reduced level to remain constant during the foreseeable future, based on what we can discern from the state biennial budget. The district is losing approximately two million dollars of state funding to charter schools, open enrollment, and scholarship opportunities, and this amount is expected to increase. Although CHUH and other districts litigated to require the state to continue providing reimbursement of Medicaid-eligible services to students, the new program is not expected to reimburse at the level of prior years, and the district must make up the shortfall. And, of course, as we all know from our own budgets, interest rates continue to be very low, so that the district's ability to make money is reduced due to lower interest income on investments. With the need to forecast monies based on assumptions, the district has made very conservative assumptions, in addition to the hard numbers. The district anticipates retirements at the same retirement rate it will be at the same rates, and the actuarial reports indicate that it's appropriate to assume an increase of seven and a half percent for health costs. The statewide polling of public school employees, health care will probably not reduce costs in any meaningful way, and also, other non-salary items are assumed to increase at zero to six percent, based on previous trends. Proactively, the CHUH school district has attempted to control expenditures. Through ongoing budget reduction processes, the district uses, various non-salary items have already been reduced by a million dollars for two thousand and fourteen. All district employees agreed to a two-year contract extension containing a zero percent cost of living increase for fiscal years twelve and thirteen. Negotiations for certificated staff just concluded, and resulting increases of one percent, one percent, and one and a half percent for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen through sixteen. An additional two-point-two million dollars was shaved from the budget in reducing staffing at all levels, and teachers previously paid over ten months have agreed to being paid over twelve months, thus removing four months out of the fiscal year now and moving forward. So, based on all of this information, and given the requirements of public school funding in Ohio, the lay finance committee has reviewed the numbers in the forecast for our district, and determined that a levy of six-point-one mils is necessary to be placed on the ballot in the calendar year two thousand and fifteen to continue the current level of education of our students. But the good, the good news is that though, I'm sorry, through the district-wide master facilities plan implemented by the voter-approved bond issue in two thousand and thirteen, and the capture of some of the operating cost savings from Wiley Middle School, the school district was able to put off the regular three-year levy cycle. It stretched that levy to four years. So, instead of going on the ballot this year, in two thousand and fourteen, as was indicated in our last report in two thousand and eleven, the district was able to delay a year, but must now go to the voters in two thousand and fifteen. Again, given the politics of funding, it is possible that the guarantee, which provides us about three million dollars a year, will be eliminated, the state payment per pupil could change, additional tax monies could be removed, and the economy could further falter. All of these possible factors were considered by the lay finance committee, and determining the safe way to protect our children's education is to place a six-point-one mil levy on the ballot in two thousand and fifteen.
Any questions, discussion?
Well, first, I just want to, I mean, congratulate, I mean, it's never good news to say that we're gonna have to go back on the ballot, but I believe that congratulations are in order to all involved at the administrative and teacher level and everything, that everyone who has worked in the face of continuing to get hammered by the state, both as a district and as a city, just, it's astonishing, especially when you begin to hear them listed out there, the number of body blows this district has taken financially from the state in the last few years. And the fact that we were in the face of all that, willing to continue to tighten our belts, and able to find ways to stretch this levy, which was designed to only go three years into four years, I think is a testament to the work that's being done in our offices to make sure that our kids continue to get the education they're getting, and yet, that we don't have to go back to the voters any more often than we do. And it's unfortunate, we do have to go back now, fifteen sounds like the year. I know the city is considering going out, because they too are at the end of their financial rope in some ways. So, it's gonna be a tough time, but again, commendations to everyone involved for getting us this far on a limited amount of dollars.
Just a quick question. I think the last time we went out, we were able to get below six. Have you done any analysis of what it would take for us to get below six?
Yeah, the superintendent and I reviewed some millage models, and, you know, we could... could, if we reduced the budget for 2015, 16 fiscal year, by anywhere from $250,000 to $500,000, we could get the millage under six.
You mean 5.9?
Yeah, so at 5.9, or anywhere between 5.9 and 5.5. Again, you know, we could run different scenarios to see what that would look like. But I think we've, we've determined that approximately a quarter of a million to half a million dollars in further reductions starting in 2015, 16 school year would get us under the six mils, and I think we believe that, that we can do that.
Now, part of the reason we have, because the state requires us to show five years in advance, that's part of the, correct me if I'm, that's part of the reason we're okay for this school year, but the reality is, is that because the state says you got to show revenue for the next five years out, that's part of what prompts us, correct, or am I right?
Well, and the fact that in, in this, this next, if we are on the ballot in 2015 calendar year, we would restart, we would start receiving money in 2016 because the property taxes lag a year. 16 would be a half-year collection, and we wouldn't see a full-year collection until fiscal year 2017. So yes, part of the reason is we're looking out that far, and if we, if we don't address that need now, then we would face a major deficit.
And if, from the numbers in Jane's notes, we've got, basically, the state's been balancing their budget on our backs, or all, I should say, most local governments, so that's about $2 million a year, and then the charter schools is another two. So ostensibly, that's $4 million a year that we could, otherwise, we would be using from the state, we're losing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, and that's, and this has been going on for a couple of years. So in reality, if it wasn't for those components, we might be able to get another year out of the cycle or lower millage, correct?
That's a possibility, yeah. The governor's very much pro-competition in education, so, so all those opportunities at choice, the scholarship programs are all, you know, charter schools kind of situations.
And we have, you know, we, we like, from the presentation before, you got a classroom with 20 kids, you got a classroom with 18 kids. We have, we still have a teacher, we still have a building, but the money that would have funded those two students flows out of us and goes to somebody else?
Absolutely.
I don't know who this, whether this would be for you, Scott, or for you, Tulisa, but in, you said you ran some of those numbers to get at least a ballpark for what it would have to be done to get it under six. Have you, as a, as a team, have you also begun, I know that you're constantly looking at ways to save, I mean, I, I hear you talking about that often, and I know that that's a, a value, but without going into detail at this point, are there, are there areas that you think that could be done, or, or could you bring those forward to us? How long would it take you to be able to put those together to bring them to us?
Well, we have, as you mentioned, we've already begun those conversations, and we have, we have a process that we're, in January, we're, we're going to start the budget process for the, for next fiscal year a little earlier than we normally would. And Dr. Dixon brought a, a process from Michigan that's kind of an economic impact forum that we're going to use this year to, to try to do some deeper thinking with our cabinet, to see what some of the reductions we can make might be. So we have started that, and I feel like probably within the first couple of months of, of, of the calendar year, we should have a good list that we can bring to the board to suggest to you how we're going to get there.
Should we, again, again, looking at the calendar, should we start looking at dates in January and February to set aside a, either an entire board meeting or part of an agenda to discuss this at greater depth? I mean, when, I guess this is going to be a big topic, so I mean, when, how soon can we start discussing this, and how soon should we start discussing it in depth?
Discussing timing of the levy or reductions?
Well, I think the, the whole thing. I mean, what, what we want to, you know, what, what we can do as far as reductions to bring any potential millage down, as well as a discussion of, does the board accept the recommendation, and as well as, when do we want to, you know, what's our game plan?
I think we're prepared to, to lay that timeline out.
Well, the, the committee discussed the idea that the city is going to go out for a levy or some kind of bond issue next, some kind of ballot issue next year?
There was some conversation about that, but not really in terms of strategies or that kind of thing. The lay finance committee strictly wanted to come to the Board of Education and say, "We need, the district needs this much millage in calendar year 2015," and then leave that to...
So the board really needs to get on it, in terms of kind of figuring out the timing?
Right, because we have elections in May, August, and November of 15.
I think that, because then it becomes a combination, where lay finance is focused purely on economic or on finances, finances, we do have to discuss, look at the political. And I think that's really where we need to have some serious discussion and conversation. And then that ties completely with the calendar, as far as what we want to do for, for staff, as well as anybody else. If we're going to put something on the ballot, we need to have a serious conversation about it.
Yeah. Do you have any idea, we usually have a couple of readings before we put anything on the ballot, right?
Two readings.
Do you know the lead time?
Ninety days.
Ninety days?
Yep.
So if we were going to go in May, for example, we'd have to have it ready in February?
Yes. If we were going to go in May, the election is May 5th, so 90 days would be February 4th. So we would have to have two readings prior to February 4th.
Is there, is there a requisite on how long between readings?
There's not. It just requires me to go to the county once the board takes the first reading, then I go to the county, certify the millage, and then come back for a second reading. But that can be condensed, you know, based on timing.
How long you think it takes to, to get the certification from the county?
Well, we've traditionally done it, you know, the two weeks between what meetings would be, but if, in emergency circumstances, you can actually have the county online with you during your meeting and do both readings in the same meeting. I mean, it's rarely done, but it can be. So there's really no legal or statutory requirement in between. You just have to have the board take action, have the county do the certification, and the board take action to accept the county's certification.
But if, if that were to be our decision, the exact cuts that you might identify to get the millage down to the place where we believed we had the best opportunity would not need to be identified before that. We could direct the administration to come back to us, but that there, but give a specific amount.
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, I think the issue we have to, we as a board have to decide is that if we're, you know, my personal preference is November, but if we were going to go in May, we pretty much in the beginning of, early, in January, we have to make a decision, are we going to go in May or not? So I think that's where we, my thought would be that in the first couple of weeks of January, we have that discussion of, do we want to look at that window of opportunity or let that pass?
What do you, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, we have to make a decision in, in sometime in January if we want to follow the protocol of 90 days' notice.
Well, we have to follow that protocol.
Right.
No, I, I, I was talking about, we don't have to go at the level that you were proposing in terms of what the cuts might be.
Oh, no, no.
Before that, that's what I was saying.
What we need is the dollar amount that we would, if we have a certain millage that we want to go for, we have to, the dollar amount, have staff say, yes, we think we can cut that amount, let them figure out the specifics of the cut. But we have to make a decision from a calendar standpoint of, is it, is it May or is it not May? We have to make that decision ostensibly in the first three weeks of January.
And even if it's August, we still talking about May, I guess?
Yeah. If we were on in August, May 6th would be 90 days prior.
So that means we would have to do it in April?
Right.
Okay. So it's basically three months apart, and November would be July.
November 3rd, we would have to be, August, August 5th would be 90 days prior.
We'd have to do it in July.
That's a good guess.
Yeah, okay.
So, but I do think we're prepared to bring this conversation forward again at the organizational meeting on January 6th.
But I think we have to be prepared.
Yeah.
For that. Anything else? Okay.
January is shaping up nicely. It's going to be the best January ever.
But we're going to have a lot of business to take care of.
We're going to have a lot of business.
So that moves us to business services. I think we can take G1 and 2 together, correct?
Yes.
I'll accept the motion to approve G1 and 2.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions?
Thank you again to everyone who's donating.
Huh?
Thank you to everyone who's donating. Some of these are very large donations and very important ones, and it's very kind of the community to step up this way.
Please still send the thank you notes, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, so I'll make sure.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Gaynor.
Ms. Bevler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Okay. I think the item G3, we have a GMP agreement that we want to have a motion on at some point.
Yes, we do.
But we want a presentation first, or we want to get the motion?
I think we should do item 3, and I would ask, oh, he's there. Mr. O'Brien is available to give a brief explanation of what this item's about and then take any questions the board has.
Mr. O'Brien with the PMC ZBZ team. What you have in front of you this evening is the general trades contract for the work at the Wiley Middle School. It includes buying the prefabricated metal buildings for the expansion, not the expansion, but the separate gymnasium, for the separate fine arts building, for the corridors that we need to build to connect out to the modular buildings that we've previously authorized. And there are additional items that have to happen inside Wiley that are included in this general trades package. Again, it's about $5 million, and there are, there will be some additional work, we'll come back to you in January for, that would finish up the work at Wiley, some mechanical, electrical plumbing work, but this is the, the third of four packages. The sum total of all of the work that we have at Wiley, we have approximately $14.3 million in enabling projects. The award of this contract, we will still be within what our budget is, and like I said, this is the, the next step. So that is the big picture of where we are and where we're going at Wiley.
Any questions?
You want the motion before the questions?
Put a motion.
So moved.
So move what?
I thought there was a motion to...
There's no motion on the floor.
I thought that was the motion. Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve items.
I'll accept the motion to approve the GMP agreement for the enabling projects as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Now we got, now I've got questions.
Okay.
So we've got $14.3 million, but we should view that as, that's an expense for four years because that's the middle schools. This will cover our costs for the middle school, the high school and the middle schools.
That's correct. This is the work to, this is the work to improve the Wiley property, to operate as the high school for two years, and then as a middle school for two years.
And we already paid, we've already approved the modular units, the site, the extra groundwork, site work, and then this is the work inside the building, as well as the other bump outs that are basically roughed out, except for, you said that there's some other miscellaneous stuff.
There still remains, this, for example, will build the, the place where the elevator's going to go on the back of the one wing, but it's not buying the elevator itself, the elevator, but it's building the enclosure that'll go in. It'll build all the corridors that will connect all the buildings, so the students don't have to go outside to go out to the modulars.
And just, just one correction, the 14 million is, is all of the enabling projects?
That's all of the enabling projects.
Right, so the other schools and the parking and everything.
Correct. Yeah, that, yes, correct.
And my other question would be for the, when, obviously, the modules will go away and we return the site, the interior of Wiley, when we're at the closure of the four years, will it be, it'll be in a condition theoretically then that we could use it if we wanted to for additional, I mean, it'll still, if anything, it's almost a minor renovation of the, of the structure, is that correct?
Depends on what your use would be.
Okay.
But it, it'll, it'll be, again, still a fully operational building.
Okay. So it'll, my point being is that if we wanted to use it for, it's not going to be a worn-out husk in the end of four years.
No.
It'll have, we could, there's definitely value in the structure.
Correct.
Okay. Where are we, where are we trending as far as, we're three out of four bid packages, where are we as far as...
This, this one was, there were competitive proposals. This one was, whereas the site was less than we thought it would be, this one was more than we thought it would be. So they're bouncing out.
Okay. But we're still...
We are still within the confines of where we need to be.
Okay. But, but, because this one came in higher than the last one, where we saw good savings, not so much this time?
Yeah, correct. I would not anticipate Eric having any surplus money from the enabling projects to be able to assign to any other projects.
That's, you know exactly where I'm going.
Yes.
Okay.
That was your question.
Yeah, that's pretty much, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Kobel.
Yes.
Ms. Bevler.
Yes.
It's getting real.
Okay, that gets us to our facilities presentation, which is our normal facilities presentation we do every month. So we will have the presentation, and we will have comments from the audience, and then we'll have a conversation among the board members and the team. Okay?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Register. So we have the design team back with us, and they will be making a presentation, as you've indicated, but we'd like to start with Dr. Dixon, who has a couple of comments regarding CTE.
All righty. Good evening again. So I wanted to make a few comments regarding CTE and the decisions that I made recently to make some changes with our location and locating some of our programs, making a decision to allow some programs to remain at this site. As Bob Swaggart stated earlier, when we talk about providing options for our students, we really want to be strategic in what those options are, what those pathways are for students. And with CTE programs changing nationally, even President Obama's initiative even talked about, how can we really get students' career in college ready? By expanding those opportunities and getting away from this notion of the old vocational programs. And to do that, we can't limit the options for students. Currently, our, our program design has a set of courses that we've decided are options for our students, and those options will be what we will move to our high school. In my opinion, that limits the options for students and limits our ability to grow our CTE program. So in order to prevent us from locking our students into the number of programs that we currently have and affording the opportunity for us to expand those options, I believe that we should keep some programs here at this site and grow the programs as we see fit when new opportunities come for our CTE programs, such as I mentioned earlier, that the fire chief of the city asked if we could start a fire safety program. And at the time, I stated to him that I didn't think that was possible because we were all going to one location. But with us having two locations, we could potentially enter a partnership with the city and possibly have that program for our students. So my main reason for making a decision to allow some programs to remain here is so that we can grow our CTE programs and provide other additional options for our students.
Thank you.
Just one question.
Sure.
As we say that we could have programs in different places, do we have any sense of what programs we would recommend and what location, or is that something still to be worked on?
Actually, we've decided that AutoTech would be here on the site, our pharmacy... Our pharmacy tech will remain and our, what is it, health careers will remain on-site. With the potential of adding additional programs.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Gary Balog to do his presentation.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Well, last week, we had a presentation. This week is kind of a repeat of that, although I do have some updates. We did submit a preliminary site plan to the Planning Commission and, on December 10th. And they have been, I would say, they have been very cooperative. They are, when I say cooperative, they want to help us, I think. They wanna help us along. So we submitted that, and we've already received some comments. We do have another meeting this Thursday to go over those comments. They wanna kind of prepare us for the Planning Commission meeting, which I believe is on the 17th or 18th of January. It's...
In that, in that time.
We're on the agenda for January, which is good because this is just preliminary, so we'll go before the commission. The other thing is that we are scheduled for a mini neighborhood meeting on January 7th. The Planning Commission has suggested that we send out notifications to all of the neighboring properties and invite those folks to a meeting where we give a presentation of where the site is at currently as well as an update on the progress on the project. So, and then we'll receive their comments and then prepare for the Planning Commission meeting on the 18th.
It's actually the 14th.
The 14th?
Yes.
Okay, 14th. So I knew it was sometime around the middle of January, so many meetings. As I said before, the number of parking spaces, when I say on-site, I'm including parking spaces that we are proposing to put on Washington. In addition to the parallel, because there was a question, the parallel parking spaces on Washington that are not going to be changed because of some angle parking will remain. But when I say parking spaces outside, I'm talking about the parking spaces on Washington and the parking spaces that are on, actually on the school property. So this is basically, as I said last week, it's basically the status quo. We're staying around the same number of spaces that you currently have. The ball fields will remain. We are suggesting that they could possibly be reoriented because during construction, at least a portion of both fields will be damaged. So if it's within the realm of the budget, during reconstruction, reorient those fields, we would think about potentially reorienting those. Parking around the stadium remains. And as I said before, we have a net reduction in the amount of hard surface paving and roof area, which is good because it's gonna help us in terms of the water that we need to detain on-site or reduce the amount of water that we have to find uses for if we are reusing that water. Freestanding athletic building, we've gotten some comments back on that. So the athletic building is kind of in a state of flux. Is that a good word? And we have a meeting, we have another meeting on Thursday to kind of discuss potentially some other... The thought is, is that right now it would have home and visitor restrooms and concessions. But sometime in the future, it, depending on funding and potentially some donations, you may be able to expand that to other community-type uses. And so we think that we'd like to plan that so that has some space for expansion. And we think that we'd like to create some separate visitor and home entrances for ticketing and for entering the field, so.
Good night. Ask a good question, or should we wait till we get...
No, jump in.
Just take a step back. The, that meeting on the 18th about the freestanding athletic building, who is that with?
That's with Kristen Hughes. Because she, you know, initially, we were looking at just programming. And we had, if you recall, the building originally included some additional locker rooms, home and visitor football locker rooms or athletic locker rooms as well as a portion of the weight room that was originally programmed for inside the high school and training room. So we've, because of cost considerations, we've reduced the size of that and some of those spaces have been returned into the high school building itself. So again, this is the site we've colorized, and it's a little bit easier to read like this. But obviously, new high school building, 26 Core. The existing stadium, this is existing parking that is around the perimeter. I think as we get, really start to look at the development of this, we may modify this a little bit because I think right now it kind of has been laid out around maybe some existing things that may no longer make sense. We have two drives, one on the east side of the building, one on the west side. This is one way up to this point, and we plan that this is a bus drop-off area for those handicapped students. They have an entrance into the building here, and there's access to an elevator right here that takes them to their spaces, the majority of their spaces. Some, we tried to maximize the amount of parking that we could wrap around these driveways without kind of encroaching into some of the setback areas. And then we stacked some aisles here to create a kind of a mini parking lot over here that has direct access to the entrance. A number of our handicap and visitor parking spaces are here adjacent to the entrance. And as I said before, we would think about potentially reorienting the baseball fields so that, so that there's some commonality between home plate and a little bit better orientation in terms of the north, south, east, west direction. Obviously, we would have to take into consideration protecting anybody who would be parking over here from fall balls. But you currently have a situation now where you could get a fall ball that goes into some of your parking area, so it's not gonna be that different. One of the things we are discussing with the city, they are going to be, as I said before, they are going to be redoing Cedar Road. And so they've asked us to look at potentially where we might want to add or change the location of some of the traffic signals. There is a possibility that I, we're checking into whether there, there used to be for state routes, school projects, there used to be some funding available from the state as far as a grant for doing things like turning, pull-off blisters and signalization, changing, changing location of signals.
Gary, what was that second thing you said? A possibility of grant funding for what?
On, the state had a program for school districts that fronted on state routes.
Okay.
They, they gave, they had a grant, and the grant could be used for if you needed a pull-off blister, when I say...
Oh, that's what I didn't get. What is a pull-out blister?
A pull-off blister is just...
I heard it, I just don't get it.
We don't wanna break the blister.
It's, yeah, it's where you, it's where you, you find you have a blister while you're driving your car and you need to pull off. No.
It's late.
It's late, and that was lame. No. It's just a widening of the road so that if you have a very busy traffic way, just if somebody's making a right-hand turn into the property, that they'd have a place to pull off before they, before they get in there. So we're kind of, we're gonna, we're gonna try and see if there are any funds available to help in that respect. As a part of Lee, there's a project that's going on Lee Road also. They're going to redo and relocate slightly the bus stop that is on Lee Road. So we're, our intent is to, for both those projects, is to coordinate our work with them. So, and then as I said before, we are looking at parking on, diagonal parking on Washington. And what they have proposed, which is something which we see not so often, but they think it would be a good idea, is to have back-end parking, diagonal parking. So you pull, you pull over and then you back in. And the reason why is because most accidents of that type when somebody's leaving occur because somebody is backing out rather than, it seems to be easier to stop and signal that you're gonna back into a parking space. And then when you're leaving, you just, you can look over your shoulder to see, actually see the traffic and pull out forward. So it's, with this being a passageway where at some point you have parents coming in to pick up or drop off students along here, which is typically what they do now, though we do have a queuing space, a fairly large queuing space alongside the building. But I think that, we're thinking that for the most part, this would be parking that would be by permit. And I would advise that whoever's permitted to park in here is not leaving the school at the same time that you get major flows of traffic for parents to pick up. That is a logistical thing. We also have some parking back here that could be used for, as we go to the plan for public visitors for cosmetology, which should be located in this area over here. So any questions on the site so far? This is pretty much a rehash of what we talked about last week. Okay, the building and floor plans. We have been doing some preliminary planning to keep pharmacy and clinical health careers here at Delisle. And again, as Dr. Dixon said, auto tech will now be permanently relocated to Delisle. And also, we are considering moving some of the CTE administrative staff to this building so that they are a little bit more connected to those programs. We will work with the representatives from these programs to develop the plans, to renovate those areas. And as we'll talk about a little bit later, funds for these, for the renovation of these areas are part of the overall budget. And there is a net reduction in the overall building footprint at the high school with the reconfiguration of those spaces. The concentration of reconfiguration, this is the Washington level. And this is, this is basically under the 1926 Core area. This is an addition that wraps around. And then back where auto tech was previously located, there's some work in there. And I've got some enlargements to talk about the spaces. This, and this is, occurs on the Cedar Level Plan, which is above, which was just above that. So John, you wanna walk us through maybe some of the changes that are down here?
Yeah, some of the changes that we, that we were looking at were sort of home locker rooms.
Right there.
So we were looking at home locker rooms with the ability to have both access to the outside for some of the activities that happen with the high school as well as close proximity to the main competition gym. This also allowed for our, there's a classroom also located in this area as well as our training facilities that are in close proximity to the exercise sciences classroom. And we did relocate some of the computer classrooms down to the southwest corner of the building. For the most part, the rest of the program has remained as we previously presented. Go to the next slide. In the, in the northern half of the building, we relocated our CTE program for criminal justice to this location, which has a close proximity once again to wrestling because of how that program functions. We also were able to look at the location of toilet rooms and add an additional visitor locker room that could be utilized once again both for the use of this field as well as some of the baseball fields, which once again gives direct access to the outside. So visitors don't need to enter the building to utilize some of the locker room spaces.
I'm gonna jump in for a second because there was a question, I believe, last time about numbers of locker spaces or sizes of locker rooms and that kind of stuff. So I went back and, because I've done this, we did it before, we talked about it, but I think it would be good to refresh everybody's memory. But the existing high school building has about 8,500 square feet of locker room space, you know, locker rooms, toilets, showers, that kind of stuff. A lot of it is not good space. I, earlier in the year, I was called down by Taj to come and look at a ceiling in one locker room that was, where the weights were being dropped on it and it was kind of punching holes and stuff was falling down. So a lot of those spaces are not good spaces that are not used. The previous design, before we moved these spaces back into the building, the two locker rooms for the visitors and then for football, had about 3,900, a little over, almost 4,000 square feet of locker room spaces, showers and toilets. The current iteration has about 68, it's, I, this is one of those things that just happens. It has 6,799 square feet. The program that was approved by the board was for 6,800 square feet. So we're, we are really right on the money for those spaces. However, there is a delta between what you have currently in the high school and what we are building of about 1,700 square feet. But as I said before, a lot of that space is not usable or ill-used. And a lot of that is cut up into, you know, little areas that were just, I think, reclaimed by a particular program and is in use. So I can say without a doubt that we're probably right on the cusp of where we need to be in terms of those spaces with this change.
So the current, so the current plan has actually less square footage than we currently have.
Yes.
But I think the upside, you know, I think the south gym is, those locker rooms are very large, but underutilized.
Yes.
Conversely, the south pool locker rooms, which are notoriously for how horrid they are, go from a closet to much, to the actual size. But even with all this, you're still talking, it's what the POR was, and it's less than we currently have square footage.
Yes.
Okay.
Jump to the next.
So the next area of the building that we looked at was the north, the northeast corner, which is where we relocated cosmetology. As we know, cosmetology has both visitors from the outside coming in as well as some students to come in. So this allows this particular program to have that direct access, which Gary showed on the site plan. We also relocated fashion, the fashion program, to this location, which has a close proximity to both cosmetology as well as FCS, the food services program, which is affiliated with this particular program. And if you go to the next slide, though, just so everybody knows, this gold area that we see, that's really building services as well as a few other programs associated with maintenance for the building. Well, right above that, in the kitchen area, was where FCS, the food services, was, which has a direct relation to the main kitchen for the student commons. What we did next was we started to look at the Delisle building in regards to pharmacy and clinical health services. And what we have here is we basically looked at two different options based on conversations that we had with the programs and the ability to provide not only a lab space, but a classroom space as basically what was desired for each of those programs.
Where, just for orientation?
Yeah, for orientation, what we're gonna do is this right here is the existing gymnasium on the lower level. And this is, is this the existing cafeteria? And Gary, if we go to the next slide.
So for the, those who aren't that familiar with the building, north would be the...
North would be over here.
That wall there.
Yeah, and we're basically up in here.
Right.
On the level above. So what we first looked at, this is the, this is, right now, to get everybody's bearings straight, this is where cosmetology is. Okay, if you come down, I think you go down the hallway and then around where both pharmacy and clinical health services currently are, there's a stair that would bring you down to this level. We looked at this, you know, just based on some conversations that we had as well as some existing sketches of the existing facilities that we visited and also some direction that we gave from the directors of the program, especially in... direction that we gave from the directors of the program, especially in regards to pharmacy. These two rooms both have lab spaces, offices, as well as some storage spaces associated with them. When you enter cosmetology, to the right does an office, as well as storage. And just so everybody knows, you know, this is our initial sketch, we haven't really discussed this with anybody in the district. So, this is just a thought that we had. But what this does is, it provides a large space for their computer work that they do, and then it also has their lab space down here with the ability to, you know, they talked about the ability to gate that off, which is where they have their pharmacy. This zone right here would allow for sinks, as well as additional teaching spaces and a refrigerator. When we go into the clinical health services, it's really an open space that allows for the different beds that they have. And then, because of requirements for sinks and everything else, we started to look at how we can lay out casework for those. Of course, you know, this zone can move over here, and we can introduce casework into some of these spaces, because there's a few of the beds that require sinks adjacent to them. So, with this layout, we need to provide additional locations for classrooms, and that's where we went to the lower level. So, because of egress and a number of other items, we really concentrated on the cafeteria for these spaces. Once again, you could come down the steps to this location, which would bring you into AutoTech, which is where the enabling project initially had it planned for. And then you could go either down a ramp, down the steps to some sort of lounge, and then into some classroom spaces. One for auto, another one for the clinical health program, and then a third one for pharmacy. And then, of course, because of egress, this brings you, this continues your path of egress. We also looked at another option, which provided both a classroom space, as well as a lab space in one room, which meant that we really sort of separated the two programs and utilized the space in each for, utilized the two classrooms for one program and the two programs for one program. This is, once again, is a lower level, and this is potentially something for pharmacy. And of course, you know, once again, the layout is, it provides both a classroom space with a teaching center, as well as space for students to sit. And then also, once again, their computer space with their pharmacy and storage. With this one, the office got located across the hall. It didn't have the direct visual access that the first one had, but it did allow for the program to be located within one space. When we go to the, when we go to the cosmetology, what we looked at here was utilizing this for potentially clinical health services, which allowed for both a classroom space and for the beds. And then this also brought CTE admin and advisors to this location, which, once again, this is where cosmetology sits. So, if we go back to the other program, we'll talk a little bit about AutoTech. AutoTech, once again, is located in the gymnasium. We did look at providing storage, which is an existing storage space, as well as lockers in this location, with, you know, with the potential for either additional storage or larger locker room spaces, depending on the discussions that we have with Jeff from AutoTech.
The question was, where do you get the cars in?
Oh, you know what? We didn't look at that yet, but, you know, we're thinking that these offices may be relocated, and that we could probably come in here because of the site constraints. So, we have to look at that.
I think the purpose of this exercise was, you know, take a look at the building, see how we can chart out the spaces that are currently being used and are going to, and that are going to kind of stay like this space. And then to take the other spaces and to see how we could lay over those program areas. Again, as John said, we haven't, we have notes from previous meetings, we've got sketches from them, we've got photographs of their existing spaces, but this is just a kind of a gut check to say, is it doable? Any questions?
What else is, I guess, this building has lots of different things in it. What else is in the building? And then also, when we're talking about the potential for expansion, if CTE was going to expand this building, where's it going to expand?
Well, you're right. There are a number of things in here. You have your IT staff that's housed in this building, you have the options program that's housed in this building. And there are, those are really the two other big programs that are here, and there's some other. But, once these spaces are occupied, the building would essentially be fully occupied. So, we would have to think about what could be relocated. For instance, the IT staff, could that be relocated? Or, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to take a hard look at what else, some of the other ancillary programs that are in here, could they be relocated?
Okay, so then, any CTE expansion means we have, we're back to the, we've got to move a piece somewhere else in the district then. And my other questions, I emailed you, you gentlemen some notes, in regards to Taylor, I'm still called Taylor, in regard to Taylor, I'm still called Taylor. We have a new roof, and we're going to put this in there. Where are we as far as mechanical systems? This building has a, it's multiple eras of carpet, tile and paint. Is, I mean, it's great if we have these really nice new spaces, and then you've got, right across, next to it is, it's crap, I mean, abortion, I'm sorry. So, the question I would pose is that, how much of the building, how much, where are we on mechanical systems and what have you, as opposed, I mean, I hate to have, because we're putting a commitment for the next 20, 30 years into this. Where are we as far as?
Yeah, that's a good question. And in our meeting on Thursday, that's one of our discussion points. I would expect that, once Gary's engineers get in here and start to look at this, they're going to make some recommendations to us about that. Keep in mind that, you know, some of the upgrades that this building needs really arguably could fall and should fall under our, and are scheduled, under our regular permanent improvements replacement schedule. And perhaps, we could use some of those dollars to address some of those issues. But, I wouldn't know until we've had a chance to sit down and talk about what we're looking at.
Because I think if we're making the commitment to be here for 20 or 30 years.
Sure.
I think we need to treat it as a whole building exercise, as opposed to just a part of the building, which we have done. We've been doing that since the building closed. It's been treated bit by bit. I think we need to view it, the whole building. And also additionally, if we're going to have a, right now, it's sort of, there's a whole host of different entrances to this structure. So, I think that if we're going to have, if we're making more of a commitment for students to be here, we need to have, okay, this is sort of the student's entrance, as opposed, if we have a, we have this entrance over here, we have the credit unions entrance, we have the loading bay entrance, the IT department. We need to have a, at least from an aesthetic and a signage standpoint, this is the student entrance. The buildings aren't great for that to begin with, and the main entrance space is totally away from the parking lot as well. So, I think that if we're going to, if we're going to treat this as, this is sort of Heights High East, we need to give it some gravitas, or, you know, make it feel that way.
I want to go back to your question, Eric, because, around the expansion issue, and give the superintendent or anyone an opportunity to discuss that, because that is, that would be a concern of mine, if we're talking about doing this so that we do have space for expansion. And maybe also whoever, I don't know, Gary or John, discuss, I believe I remember from last week, a conversation about in the high school, the new vision of the northeast corner being some opportunity for expansion also, so maybe down the road, but maybe bringing those two conversations together. Because I wouldn't want us to, in two or, in one or two or three years, to say, we have this wonderful opportunity for expansion, now that we've done the strategic and more thoughtful look at CTE, and what we're actually doing, and what we want, where we want to go with this program, and then say, oops, now we don't have any place for the options or for the IT staff, where are we going to put them?
Well, and I think, to sort of follow up on that, I think that one of the things that I would ask Gary to do, you know, in sort of, a little better answer to Eric's question about what's in here. Again, I kind of glossed over all the things that are here. There are some opportunities for expansion in this building. And I think that, you know, with, working with Gary, we need to take a careful look at that and bring that back to the superintendent and to the board ultimately, so.
And also, I was going to say, also, we can think differently about how we're currently using this space. I mean, we have this as a conference room, it doesn't have to stay, remain a conference room. We have partners in this building, we could easily relocate those partners to other spaces, potentially. So, I think if we think totally out of the box and think about it as a empty space, with the exception of options, I think the other spaces that we can create or move are easy decisions for us.
The spaces that pharmacy and clinical health currently occupy, those spaces are available, because if we relocate, if we do this, the plan this way, so those, that space is available for expansion right away, if you want to expand something into it. The other thing is, as Nancy Pepper said, is that at the high school, with the quadrant that AutoTech previously occupied, is also available for expansion there, so it's, I think.
That's available for access from both what we call the Washington level and Cedar level. So, there's the opportunity for additional, additional space to be added on both levels.
Now, in the site plans you showed us, it had a cross, it was a crosshatch and it said alternate. What's the alternate? Okay, if you're doing a bid alternate, what's going to go in there?
Well, we didn't talk about what the particular alternate would be. It would be, it would be the program that the district decides to bring into the high school. It could be a new program. It can be, you know, it could be simply academic course spaces.
Well, I guess my question would be, is that, if it's, are you saying this is an alternate, an alternate for addition in three or four years, or is this a bid alternate where we're going to build the shell and then figure out?
We would think this would just be an alternate in three or four years, or if another program came up, or if you saw the need that you needed.
So, it's room for expansion in the future, as opposed to a bid alternate then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, except for the high base space. The high base space is an alternate. And the high base space would really sit on the first level of this, so.
So, this is, okay, this is, this is.
This is Washington.
So, there's a level, there's a floor level below, correct? If I'm reading this right?
There's a floor level above.
Above, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is ground level?
This is ground level.
Okay.
This is really where the students enter right now.
Right, so it's ground level, okay.
Yeah, that's ground level.
Now, if you think about the location of AutoTech, wouldn't you have to put, build a staging area or something like that, with automobiles to come in?
At this particular?
Yeah, here.
Yeah, we would have to look at that.
Go back, go back to the, see, I'm thinking you're on the north side of the building.
This is the north side right here.
That's the north side.
Yeah.
So, what is on the?
On the east side.
On the east side. How would the cars get into the building?
Office superior.
What they would like to see is one overhead door entrance into the space, and then.
They beam the instructors.
The instructor, yes. And then bay, and then service bays on either side of that aisle going in. They have several cars that they keep, that they work on, so we need to provide some space. And typically, those are stored inside the building, or they could be stored outside if there's a security area, because they don't want somebody to, you know, bother those cars. During the daytime, in terms of, you know, clients schedule appointments and then bring their automobiles in, there isn't, it's not like a, it's not quite like a regular auto dealership, where you just constantly have cars coming in to be worked on. Those are scheduled. So, we'd have to provide enough space for clients who are coming in to drop their cars off. And again, you know, the issue of, on the high school site, there is no student parking. So, the issue would be here also is, are you going to have students park on site or not park on site? And those are logistics that we haven't really discussed yet.
And we have the parking lot across the street. I mean, that is the district's parking lot, so. But I do think the, definitely be the design, because I'm looking at it right now on maps, is that it's, you know, right now, there's a double wide sidewalk, as a word, but to make it a full entrance, it's going to require.
Additional site work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a polite way to put it, yes.
Well, we can accept comments from the audience.
Are we done?
We're not done with the presentation.
We're not finished.
Not quite.
Oh, we're not done?
Not quite.
No, not quite.
Almost there. Central plant designs, as we spoke last week, we think that the basement for the central plant would be the hybrid geothermal, and then an alternate developed for full geothermal system. And we talked about last week, we talked about the additional engineering fees for the alternate. And that prompted some comments about, well, how far do we need to take that design before we kind of have a better idea of what exactly the cost is going to be in that alternate? And that, the 90,000 is to take it through construction documents and bidding. What, the split between design development and construction documents, it's about a 60-30 split. 60,000 for design development and 30,000 for CD. So, and that is incremental too. I mean, if you, if there's an interim GMP and it's done at 50% DD or something like that, and then the decision is made to not pursue it, then obviously, you would only be responsible for how far we've taken the, taken the design. But, so that's, that's the basic split for that.
But we're, right now, we're forecasting the full, the full geothermal to be how much more than the hybrid?
Probably about 1.3 million.
So, it's 1, I mean, so for, that's become a viable alternate, we got to have some crazy little bids then, correct? I mean, right, I mean, it's 1.3 million.
We'll be able to refine that number as we go through the DD phase, so we don't know exactly where that number, that's our projection right now.
No, but what I'm saying is.
Yes, but if it stayed at 1.3, you're correct.
I mean, it's got to, it's got to be, someone's got to be really hungry for it to get it to close that gap that, you know, suddenly we got a million dollars jingling in our pockets.
Yes.
There you go.
Yep.
First of all, the changes that were presented, we feel as a team, should work within the overall high school budget. And when you, if, Gary, if you can hit it again. What we've done is, we've identified the following funding sources for the parking, the hybrid geothermal, the stadium support building, and the CTE Delisle upgrades. And what I mean by that is getting those up to the same standards as the rest of the high school, for those spaces that we're discussing that would be here. And here are the funding sources. First of all, we've now encountered savings from the stadium project. It's about $120,000 that's there. We also believe that with the reduction of square footage, there'll be some savings. We also have our soft cost contingency. We're far into the soft costs pieces that we haven't used, that we believe we could take some dollars from there. And the last one, which I've talked to the construction manager and the architects, is we now have a design contingency, we believe that'll reduce when we go through the DD phase. So, we should have, and the reason there's design contingency, it's for things that we don't know about. And a good example was the parking, the hybrid geothermal. know about. And a good example was the parking, the hybrid geothermal, the outbuilding and things. But the combination of these, rather than, we're not looking for a single place to find these dollars. It's sort of a combination of all of them, we believe should be able to accomplish those pieces. We are going to be doing, you hit that again, is, we've spoken with the construction manager, you know, their process is, they do an estimate at the end of DD. They, now with the documents that Gary has put together, they, we've talked about having them do an interim analysis, estimate analysis prior to the completion of DD. So as Gary said, one of those issues that you just brought up, by having this interim analysis can give us a better sense of, of the, going the full geothermal as an alternate all the way through, through the project. We're working, the team is meeting at our next OAC meeting, which is this Thursday. We're going to start, start all of these pieces in terms of looking at them. That pretty much concludes our presentation. But before we have the public comment, we are looking for the board is some direction on some of these key items that have been presented here tonight. Thank you.
I've got a couple other questions. I know we, in the aerial for the...
Site plan?
Site plan, well, down the site plan, on the building, on the roof plan for the building, you were originally showing, and now this is sort of a little bit off topic, but I wanted to get a sense, just to get a ballpark idea. Because when we've talked about full, a hybrid versus a full geothermal as regards to the LEED certification, because of the electrical costs on the geothermal, we really don't see much of an impact on, let's move the needle much on LEED. The original roof plan, we're in, we're building the structure to accommodate and to have the chases for a full PVA or a photovoltaic system. I'd be very curious, and I'm not looking for it this evening, but sometime in the future, I would be curious to know, one, you know, if we wanted to put a PVA system in there, what would that cost? I know we don't have the budget for it, but I'm curious to see what it would be. Conversely, if we had that, then I'd be curious again to know, what kind of an impact does it have on, in the hybrid situation? What kind of an impact, well, both to be honest, but what kind of an impact does it have on our, well, on our LEED, our LEED standard, but more importantly to me, the budget? If we had a full PVA system on the roof, what's that going to do to our electric bill? Because I think that really, I know we've had a lot of discussions about the future of the building. I don't anticipate we have the budget to do PVA. And I think probably right now, it's cost prohibitive in our, in our, in our climate. But there, I know we keep, here people at the podium will talk about companies that lease out the systems, what have you. It would be, I'd like to have that kind of information because I think that in regards to the future building operating costs, I think that would be something that would be useful to have, that kind of information. I know we're building all the infrastructure for the future, but conversely, if we have, if there is some traction on these companies that come in and do the leasing or what have you, now's the time to explore it because we're doing the construction anyway. But I would, those are two components I was curious in regards to the photovoltaic on the roof. Because I know we've been focusing so much on geothermal, if we can get some just ballpark ideas, where is that in the process? Or where, it's not really on the table for us, but in the future, what kind of an impact it would have based upon our, the pathways we're going down?
We could do that.
And the other question I would have, before we were looking to close about $3.5 million, I think it was, I forget the percentage, is this, or have we closed that gap?
We're in the, we're in the process. The architects and the construction manager have done quite a bit, especially on the exterior construction. And some of those elements, we're still, we're still analyzing. That's why we want to do this interim analysis of the estimate, which would include that $3 million in terms of savings.
And then, because you mentioned it, and we've had modifications now, we have a very good set of exterior elevations. When can we anticipate seeing new east, west, and northern elevations? Okay. Because again, because this is...
I'll be honest with you, these changes do have an impact on what's going, you know, obviously we know what's going on with the 1926 building and the rep, but particularly when you look at the northern, northern side of the building and the northeastern side of the building, this, this has a pretty big impact.
It does impact their work. It impacts their timeline. And that's one of the major discussion points we're going to have at Thursday's meeting, is to talk about how we're going to manage that.
And we, I just want to make sure, we have, this should not have an effect on the endpoint of getting the job done. But it may, we may rethink how we do these GMPs. We may do a little closer to the way we're doing Wiley, where we may have some early ones. And so we're discussing that with the construction manager, where, so we don't, we don't roll out just one guaranteed maximum price on the, on the high school. We may have some early site packages or demo, which is really the first piece, demo site, maybe early steel, and then we do the rest of it. So we are analyzing that. And that's actually the key reason of, of the next meeting that we're, our OAC. And also, a follow-up to that will be, is we'll be able to determine then, what are the rest, the right times and dates for the rest of the board work sessions.
And then that goes to something I've been harping on a couple of times before, is that we really need to start getting, we've got so much going on.
That's right.
It's like the Ed Sullivan Show with the plates on the stick. We got to start mapping out this calendar so that we're not having every, you know, we're at a meeting from 6 till 11 o'clock with a ton of items. We need to stay in top of this.
That was one of the things that Steve and I were whispering about, is that, you know, hearing that, we really need to get into the superintendent's hands, some recommendations about what the design team is going to need in terms of meetings going forward.
Yeah, well, I guess, aside from this evening, then what's our next, when's our next Hayward's decision-making thing? I mean, what do we, what's our next milestone that we have to act on?
Well, the biggest milestone will be design development.
DD approval.
DD approval. But we may shift that a little bit farther out. And because of what's happened with, and this is not, this is not, it's not bad. It's not a bad situation. But it's very normal where you go through these processes and you take a step back and kind of say you reevaluate some things. But I have a suspicion that DD approval is actually going to be a little bit farther out than what we originally, originally anticipated.
And jog my memory, when is that?
Originally, it was scheduled for the end of January.
What are we talking about, February?
February.
That's why we're having the meeting on Thursday, is to work with the construction manager, because they also have their work to do in doing their, their, their scheduling.
But as Steve said, it would be very helpful for us to receive, so, you know, we've, these, the items that we talked about tonight have kind of been kicked, been kicked, kicked around now for some time. And while we can, while we can work on certain portions of the building because we have clarity, you know, delay in making decisions on this causes a lot of heartburn, particularly on things like the, you know, if the central plant is not kind of selected, you know, we can't have the engineers just kind of spinning their wheels. So we really are asking for some affirmation from the board in terms of direction on things like, I think, I think I have, I've heard that, you know, the parking, the site plan is kind of working. The central, the hybrid is the, the base bid is kind of working. And then this, this other, this latest issue with moving programs or keeping programs here at Delisle is something that really needs to be, some type of decision needs to be made, one way or the other on that, so that we can continue.
Just a quick question. There was a certain amount of money that we needed to spend this year. What do we know about that?
We are on track to do that.
We're on track. We'll make it.
Yes.
And how much was it?
It was about $13 million. Yeah.
Okay.
We are done now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought we'd do our questions and then we have the public comment. Are we done?
Okay, you got a question?
I'll throw another question. In the, underneath the 26 wing, where you got the locker room, basically you've got a locker room that faces the football field. Right now, there's windows and you're projecting windows before. I would assume that's now going to be either false windows or some sort of, is there a reason to have the locker room there as opposed to the other side of the corridor, so then it faces the courtyard and you don't have to have those light wells for the, you don't even have a locker room?
Makes more sense to have it face the field.
Well, I understand, it's closer.
Direct access from the outside.
Direct access from the outside. And, you know, if, you know, we'll work out the exterior design, you know, whether they'd just become niches that look like window, you know, like...
Like, I, well, I, okay, I was just...
We can make, we can make the fenestration work. That's...
Okay, I was just, because I was, I wanted to hear the logic behind it because on the one hand, I see on the courtyard side, it makes sense because you don't have to have the light wells. On the other side, you have access. Okay.
We may actually have some high windows that, that allow light into that space. You know, locker rooms don't have to be dungeons.
You've been to the South Pole, then. So I, 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 I don't know, for the rest of my colleagues, I like, as I said previously last week, I think the, a lot more, as we get more into details, it's looking sharper, it's looking nicer, it's looking tighter. It looks, it's good to see the cities working with us and on the Lee Road and the Cedar Road projects. So I'm comfortable. The issue for myself is that the, if we're going to make a commitment to Taylor for the next 30 years, it needs to be a thought-out plan, not what we've been doing for the past 20, which is just, okay, we'll do this space here, that space there. I think it needs to be really, we need to have a comprehensive plan for this building because that was one thing that was left out for issue 81. I think if we can get that, not every, not in bulk, but at least an idea of how we can do it, I think that would help me and I think the public as well.
I think there are issues, you know, we haven't really, you know, we just kind of looked at where could we, where could spaces fit in. But I think we want to look at the building in a comprehensive way and say, as you said, you know, student, you know, entry, how do you get into the building, security, all those kinds of issues because it doesn't exist now. But we certainly don't want to repeat any, you know, things that don't work. We want to make the building work.
Well, also, if you're doing work for all the CTE components, if we've got other spaces, now's the time to put the chases and the utilities and what have you in it to upgrade other spaces as well. So I mean, I think if we're, we're obviously going to be putting, it's going to be seven figures into the building, we need to be viewing it holistically, not ad hoc. Those are my questions.
Okay, well, we're here from the audience, and then there may be some other things we might want to talk about. Sam?
Thank you. I'm Sam Bell. Mr. Silverman, I think, has an excellent idea that it is indeed time to look at the whole thing. The whole thing. Now, one of the things that you as a board have tasked the FAC with is the enforcement of a certain list of promises. And that list specifically includes the return of all CTE programs to the Heights campus. You are now proposing to abandon that particular point. And it is my contention that that's a perfectly good time for you now to take a look at the whole project and at all of those points. And very specifically, at the one point which is most holding this project back. And that is this devotion to the front facade. If we could move the front of the building 50 feet towards Cedar Road, we have enough room for everything on that campus. But for some reason, we're stuck with the idea that we must maintain this formal piece of lawn that will never be used. It will never be used. Students will not use that. They will not be allowed to use that. Anyway, I think you should look at the whole program. All right. On the auto, I have very specific things. As you may know, I helped the auto program get its certification through, through NATF, and it's the only nationally recognized uniform certification of any program in the school. We need outside secured parking, but particularly, we need access to late-model, actual in-use cars. Now, currently, we have the faculty and staff at the high school who provide probably 80, 80 to 90% of the outside cars. And it's critical that students learn on cars that have real rust. You know, if you take apart an old car once and you put it back together, it comes apart real easy the next time. Okay? That's not the real world. Not, not where these kids are going to have to know what to do. This idea of bringing the auto program to this building and then leaving it here in exile permanently is, I think, very, very poorly thought out. With all due respect to everybody, I know it's all done with good intent, and it's certainly doable for a couple of years during the diaspora that we're all facing from the, from the Heights campus. But I don't think it is a good idea to do that in the long-term basis. The students will suffer. I also think that it's a critical idea that, that we embrace the concept of equity of access for all of our students. Students who are here at Delisle will lose instructional time or they will lose opportunity. They cannot, they cannot participate in extracurricular activities that are held on the main campus because they can't get there in a timely enough way without losing instructional time. So if what we're really about as a district is educating the students, I think we really have to look at this and say, wait a minute, are we willing to sacrifice that for devotion to a couple of old bricks? I personally am not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments?
Hello. My name's Malia Lewis. You have all, I think, almost, received a copy of my remarks in advance. And I thought for a little while that perhaps I would just rescind what I was going to say since the decisions seem to have been made already about moving specific programs to Delisle permanently. But I think that, I'm going to read them anyway, because the process is important as well as the end product. Even though I have been working with the CTE Community Working Group for nearly a year, tonight I speak only for myself. Teachers best understand the needs of their programs. Individual program teachers must be asked their preference of location rather than being moved around like pieces on a chessboard. Some teachers might prefer to have their program housed at Delisle, others might not. And without asking, you will not know. However, I need to contradict myself. Teacher's preference is not the most important thing. The important thing is the reason for that preference. There might be important programmatic reasons for specific programs to be located in specific places. And unless we speak to the teachers, we don't know. We all want to see CTE become as successful as possible. Career and technical education needs to be better promoted, better accepted, and better integrated in our high school because that is how we do right by our students, and that is how we comply with state and federal laws. But it will be much harder to create a new culture around CTE if part of the faculty is off-site. Time spent traveling back and forth is time spent not grading, not keeping records, not meeting with students, not meeting with parents or business partners. Faculty meetings become harder to schedule. There are no quick conversations in the hallway. It becomes much harder to orchestrate collaborations across disciplines or grades. Teachers miss out on the impromptu exchange of ideas, which gives new insight into their material or to, into their teacher, into their students. Students also lose precious instructional time traveling between buildings, and they miss the same sorts of impromptu encounters by being off-site. Housing part of CTE at Delisle does not prevent the improvements we want to see from happening. It only makes it harder to achieve them. So you must be more deliberate, more concerted about making sure CTE thrives as a department instead of as a bunch of programs in separate silos. And I fear that those silos that are here may suffer more than the ones that are at the high school. At the beginning of this school year, students in the morning CTE shift at Delisle were left out of the new universal breakfast program. This is but one glaring example of out-of-sight, out-of-mind syndrome. What other things have those... What other things have those students missed out on? What future things will they miss out on? We owe all of our students access to a complete high school education. Separate has meant unequal in the past. So to avoid repeating past mistakes, make sure that schedules, transportation, discipline procedures, prerequisites, extracurriculars, guidance counseling, and all the parts of a high school education I don't know about mesh so that students in programs housed at Delisle are not forgotten or underserved. All our students deserve access to the wealth of opportunities and services we offer. All our students need to be held to high standards and pushed to achieve more than they or we thought possible. The district should encourage synergies and efficiencies where they make sense. One example, exercise science, pharmacy tech, and clinical health careers might benefit from being housed together as they share certain curriculum components. They also share CPR certification and first aid with the criminal justice program. If housed together at Heights Heights... At Heights High, those programs could benefit from proximity to athletic equipment and spaces, to science labs and science faculty, as well as from proximity to each other. On the other hand, it might make sense for them to be housed together at Delisle. Perhaps criminal justice would make sense at Delisle as well. I don't know. I cannot know because I have not talked to all the right people. Before you make any sort of permanent decision, you need to talk to those right people so that you do know. In fact, consult with all the teachers. They have ideas about what will work best for their programs and for their students. If you choose to place programs at Delisle and create a secondary campus, please make sure you place the right programs here. Make sure that those programs, students, and teachers are integrated completely into the rest of Heights High. A secondary campus could be a tremendous asset, a place to expand our offerings, a place to create new programs, a place to change our mix of programs to meet changing needs of the local economy, a place to give more students meaningful career and technical education, leading to college credit, industry-recognized certification, and employment. Just do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Don? Remember to stay within the five minutes. I should have announced that earlier. Well, I should have said it for everybody.
That's all right. I think they hit all the high points. Don Frederick, 3585 Cummings Road, Cleveland Heights, Ohio, 44118. And following board policy, once again. You know, this expansion or keeping things at Taylor, you know, I was kind of working on that and thinking about that. That was when it was like taking pressure off of the high school to have some things here. But then I realized, that's damaging the education process and splitting it up and not keeping it in the same spot. The real thing that's putting pressure on this is the old bricks, the facade, the squeezing in of the front. If that part would expand out about where the science wing is now, I think almost all of these problems could be solved with room for expansion. I think there's room for expansion here in the future. There are big programs, construction, fire, whatever, you probably would want to have that, not so much on-site at the high school. And we could look at that. The sticking to the facade provides absolutely no educational benefit to our students. That's what we passed this bond levy for. Talk about the promises. The big implied promise is that we provide excellent educational facilities for our students. I can go into five minutes of examples of what goes wrong and has gone wrong for 10 years now with two different site locations. Three months, kids go here without breakfast. Rest of the district, the entire district has it. Out of sight, out of mind. In fact, I think what stimulated getting breakfast here was a student-run petition that started making its way up the chain of command. Because why don't we get breakfast? Lunch, they lose lunchtime in transit. Shaker and Warrensville students, too, too. That's another issue. What is allowed to eat in the building? Even if they bring something with them, they're not allowed to eat. Mostly because, like, somebody doesn't want to clean up after them. I just don't believe that, you know? I think we really need to reexamine the frontage of the high school and try to get all of this stuff to high school. I know architecturally, I don't know what the pricing schedule is on all that, but I think that these gentlemen here could do a really good job of making the new front nice, really nice. In fact, more impressive than keeping the old back in the corner space with the grassy area that students aren't allowed to use now. The only time I've ever seen a student use that is I saw a security guard drag a student out into that area in the cold last year to talk him down from an anger management problem. That's the only time I've seen that space actually used. Let's see. There's a lot of issues here. Now's the time to, you know, take a step back and look at this. It's really important that we get this right. There was some confusion about whether I wanted the science wing to stay. I didn't at the last meeting I talked about. I was just saying, when they put up the science wing, they thought it was more important to put up a science wing than to keep the facade open for viewing at that point in time. And that was 50-some years ago. Education was what was important to them, not visibility from the street. We're build this for our kids. I think if everybody... In fact, a lot of people I talked to that work on levies time and time again, when I explained to them the situation that to keep a facade, we're going through all these contortions by pressing, squeezing in the site and where things have to move off-site or have to be downsized or relocated. I ask them, which would you rather have? The facade or the appropriate educational facilities located at the high school? To a member, they say, forget the facade, build the right building for our students. Thank you.
Anybody else? Remember, five minutes, Alan.
It'll be shorter. Alan Wilkinson, 1286 Yellowstone. I emailed you guys something today. It says a lot of what they said there. It gave you a different option for solving some space problems. Just read it. I ask you to respond with some questions or answers, you know, process it, and it'll do the same kind of things these guys are talking about.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. Board members? Anything else?
Well, we have to give them guidance. We have to... They very clearly said they wanted some guidance before they left tonight. Have we done that? You feel like we've given them guidance?
Yeah, we haven't given...
I think we have to.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about this, obviously. And I just want to jump in first because I grabbed the microphone first. But a couple of reactions to what I heard. I think I agree with almost everything that was said, and I appreciate the passion and the research and all of the work that the four of you have done to support the district overall, but these programs in particular. I do want to say that... And I'm really not being sarcastic, Don, when I say... When I say to... Yeah. When I say, you know, asking people, would you rather have a facade or all of the CTE there is a reasonable question. But the other question could be, would you rather have a softball field or all the CTE there? Would you have all... Rather have all the parking on-site or the CTE there? Would you... You know, there are lots of choices that have to be made and that have had to be made in this process that aren't just a facade or all of the CTE programs there. The thing... The two points that strike me the most are, and the thing that I've spoken with the superintendent about probably half a dozen times over the last two weeks since this has bubbled, is the... My concern about not following through on the promises to the voters around Issue 81 and that's a really difficult... That would require a very high bar for me to say that I'm willingly... I'm going to go down that path. And the other one is exactly what I said last... At the meeting last time, which is that whole second-class citizen forgotten group concern that I certainly have for both the students and the instructors. And I... Molly, I really appreciated a lot of your detailed comments and suggestions about how to improve that if that is a decision that's made to have both of these sites operating for CTE. So those are points that I've made and really said, if we have to make this really awful decision, and I put it that way because it's not the optimal, that I would expect and demand that all of those pieces be in place so that we do things like special transportation. It's crazy that kids can't eat in this building. We need to make sure that that happens. We need... You know, everything needs to be done at a much better level. But it's not going to solve... It's not going to solve everything because it's still separate. And I understand that. But those are just my initial comments to what I heard tonight. I appreciate it. I'm struggling with this, and I want to hear what my colleagues have to say. But I've... We've had these conversations, and I don't know if you want to respond at all to some of those pieces that you and I have talked about in terms of the concerns that you also heard from the instructional staff.
Right. Again, good comments. And Molly, again, I concur with Nancy. You kind of really pulled all the pieces together. And we're kind of, you know, we're facing some difficult, you know, timeline. You know, how do we really fit everything that we want in the confines of what we have? That's the bottom line that we're faced with today. So how do we make it work? Do we leave everything at the high school with smaller spaces, limited programs, and all the other pieces that we're faced with? Or do we step back and say, what would be a better design for us? Leave some programs there and grow the program? You know? Do we have time to go back and say, you know what? Let's be more thoughtful. Let's go back and maybe, you know, rethink it and look at it again? What would that push us with our timeline? I agree that we should make a... Be very intentional about making CTE program an optimum program in the district. I agree. My assumptions coming in that that was done. That's the only thing I have to go with, is the plan that we have and moving forward with the plan that we have and then trusting that the team that put it together use their best judgments of putting that plan together. So that's what I, as a superintendent, have to move forward with the plan that I was received and maximizing that plan and trusting that the people put it together thought about a lot of these things. Knowing that we may have to go back and tweak some things and make some different decisions and being transparent about what those decisions will be. I spoke with two teachers, Ms. Kiss and Ms. Blue, started my day yesterday morning at their building and saying, okay, let's talk about it. And we did. Should I have done that in August? Probably if I had have known these things in August, but I didn't. But as they were being revealed to me, I want to have some conversations about what next steps. You know, what could we do, knowing that they can work with the architects and they can... You know, what would the space look like? I'm listening to my board members and saying, we just don't want you to come in and paint and change the knobs. We want an overall vision of what that space could look like and what would those programs look like moving forward. So there are some mixed reactions, but knowing we have to move forward and we have to, I agree, make some optimum space for our kids because we are... That's what it's about, making sure that we have the optimum educational space for our students. But if we need to rethink it, we need to rethink it. If we need more time, we need more time. I don't know what that looks like, but, you know, I'm here to lead the charge, and I'll lead the charge in whatever direction that the board gives me.
If I could just add to that, that we... I don't want the audience or people watching to not know that we also heard from some members of the community pretty strongly that as the plans were being laid out for CTE at the high school, very specifically, whoa, 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 please don't do that because there's not enough space, there's not... We don't like that. Why don't you just do a bang-up job and expand offerings at Delisle? We did hear that from more than one person in this community. So I think the design team and the administration, you know, is struggling with all of this and took that back, too. So I just wanted to say that, that that was something that, you know, we did hear from people about.
Just one thing. And I appreciate a lot of the comments. Malia's comments were very... I really liked how balanced because the point is, there isn't one single solution to every problem. And in fact, if we said that the solution to the problem was to put everything in the high school or the solution to the problem is to break them up, we should have... This problem should have been solved a long time ago because we've done this a bunch of times now. We sort of move things around and we keep on and rejiggering things. The solution... Something Sam said, which is equity and access has to be a non-negotiable. And so whether or not that is a non-negotiable because it's all in one building or it's a non-negotiable because it's spread into two buildings, it's a non-negotiable. So really, what we need is the educational services team to be really strong here about ensuring that the program that is in those buildings... Building or buildings. It... I'm not... It doesn't... It's not that it doesn't matter, but ultimately, it's in support of the program. So what we need is the strength of the program now. The program has to run this. So I... I'm not sure that I feel... Again, I'm probably the one who's least married to the facade that people are going with. But we may be so far down that path right now that we need to make that work. And so I am... I've heard you say at the beginning that you feel that having programs in this building gives us a lot more opportunities. But I'm going to challenge you to make sure that works. And that is really about making sure scheduling works, making sure that kids can get between classes, making sure they do have access to all the programs, making sure the adults who have to transfer, travel, are able to travel. It is about the program. So, I mean, I almost... I'm at a point where I can give guidance from my standpoint to the architects. But I think that the edge services team has to be giving guidance to all of us about how... And giving everyone confidence that we can make this work out.
Agreed.
Just a couple of quick comments. Clearly, Delisle is an asset. Clearly, we can get some benefit by having programmed some programming here. We've decided that the program in here that makes most sense is CTE. One of the backdrops to this is that it seems that we may not have had full conversations with teachers, and we said that that's an important piece. And I don't... I just don't get the sense that we really massaged that. For example, is it the right mix that we're talking about if we're talking about bringing CTE programs over here? Are we having a... Are we got the... We sure we got the right programs? Could it be other programs? Could it be, for example, programs that are already here that might would like to stay? I mean, I'm not sure. But I think at least there's another take at this that needs to happen. And I think that means engaging the teachers a little bit more. I don't think we need to waste a whole lot of time on it, but I think we need to make sure... sure that if we talk about CTE and we talk about a team, that we've dealt with the team and we're not just dealt with isolated programs. So that's, that would be my comment about this entire conversation.
Yes, I think the parking solution looks good. I think the, uh, no, I'm just gonna run down the list. I think the, uh, the hybrid is a great way to go. I would love to see us get to full geothermal and to continue to push that. I understand the, the logistical problems with that, but the further we can go with that, the better. I would love to get the information on the photovoltaic cells just to see what, I don't know how much longer that's gonna take to get that information, but I would be, again, to at least allow the possibility of doing that in the future. I think if we can assure, I mean, to the degree that we can ever assure anything in the future, that, um, that equity access questions will be answered by moving CTE here and that it will be for ten years down the road, to the best of our ability, that we can look back and go, actually, that was a really good choice. I'm in favor of that. Um, I'm in favor of the facade, the nineteen twenty-nine facade. Um, what else did you need guidance on?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. Was there other, no, I mean, seriously, were there other things that we, that?
No.
I'm only one-fifth of the vote, I'm only one-fifth here. I'm not speaking for the board. I'm just giving you, if that's, that would be my guidance at this point. And I, and I would urge the, the members of the community who are, who are valiantly and smartly, um, putting a spotlight on CTE right now to figure out, and I think steps are being taken this way already, how to best make that transition work. I, I, um, if we are moving into this building, again, one-fifth of, of the, the board thinks that is an okay idea to go ahead and split them, I don't have a problem with two campuses as close as they are together. I see the issues that have been raised tonight and I'm sure there are other ones we don't know about yet. Um, but I would hope that the community will stay engaged in terms of trying to figure out how to make that, to work with education services to figure out how to make that as smooth as possible and to address the issues as they come up, to make sure kids are getting fed, to make sure that there is a minimum of disruption. Uh, yeah.
So when we think about the budget and we think about those savings that could find these other things, these are places to hunt. Is that what it is? I mean, if I'm, wanted to find one point three for the geothermal, this, I'd be hunting in this.
Well, those, that, that, uh, I wouldn't call it a hunt. I would, first of all, for the full geothermal, we already know using these, these elements that we have available to us for budget, uh, to pay for, that, that we can only get to the hybrid.
I could use a geothermal as something.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't pointing in that direction.
Okay.
I'm just asking if we're on a hunting expedition, oh, we can talk about specific savings, right? The savings from the stadium project, we can talk about that.
Yes.
Reduction in square footage, we are not quite ready.
Right.
To talk, you know, so I'm, I'm just.
That's right, that's correct.
I'm wondering how much of a hunt this is. I mean, do we have two birds up there that we know we're gonna get? One of them?
Well, there are dollars in all, all of these. The question is, right, there's dollars in all of those. We know that.
Right.
Those are all places where we will be able to get dollars. And in our pretty high-level observation and analysis, as Steve has said, we're confident that through those areas of savings, we will be able to accomplish the things that, additional things, the parking and the hybrid alternate geothermal. So, um, the, the question now is sitting down with Gilbane to, to really refine this and do that interim analysis and, and see where we really are.
Yeah, I'm good with that, if that's, so it's not just us going out hoping that we'll find something.
No, no.
We got something in our sights.
Not for those, that's right. For those, that's correct.
All we need to do is have a couple of sharpshooters, right?
And I guess your analogy was, was correct. It is a hunt, but I think we've got some really good sharpshooters.
Remember, we have other targets that, that the board, uh, um, you know, authorized us to, to meet. And those discussions we still need to have with, um, the construction manager and the design team, yeah. Sure.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I, I thought what Malia said was, I, I thought she, I think Cal might've said that it was kind of balanced. And to me, the, from an architectural standpoint, whichever decision you make, we, we will make, we make it work. But, but the decision, you know, if, if someone is looking to us to, to make a call on what programs go where, that's not, to be, to us, that's not an architectural issue. It's a curricular issue, it's a, it's an administrative issue. So, um, so those conversations need to happen. I just turned to Steve when, when, cause, uh, you know, the, the discussion about breakfast or having lunch and that kind of stuff. I mean, that, to me is, if you say, we need to have a space where students can have lunch, we need to have lunch over here. I mean, we can, architecturally, we can solve that. There may be a slight cost associated with that, but not, we're not talking about, to me, we're not talking about big bucks since I said, you know, just things, if, if we talk about that, you know, when we do the kitchen at the high school, you are currently serving seven elementary satellite. At the end of that, you'll only be, at the end of your total program, you'll have five elementaries, not seven. So you're planning a kitchen that has the capacity, at least in the short term, to produce those meals. So is it a big, I don't know, I'm, I'm not talking for the, for the food service folks, but is it a big deal to, to have, this is a satellite area for bringing lunch and serving it over here in some fashion or have a breakfast program? I, I don't know, but if, if we're directed, if, if that is a part of making this not some separate off-to-the-side campus, but it's a part of a, part of the total program, part of that is, is doing your scheduling for classes. We had a gentleman who was here tonight talking about those, you know, offers. I'm, I'm not a class scheduler and that's not what I think about, but certainly, um, we can have, we can provide an architectural solution for what you kind of direct us to do, but frankly, the key decisions are gonna be made by the administration in terms of what they're, um, what they think is best, I guess, in terms of, you know, clustering or, you know, however you guys wanna cut it, we'll, we'll deal with it.
But you need those decisions soon, as soon as possible.
Well, when I say that, it's because, it's because we're on a timeline.
Because of the show.
There's a, there's a, an end date for occupying that building. And what happens is, is you have construction and you have preparing those, the GMP and then you have the design. And what, what's happening is that when you delay those decisions, we start to, you know, we start to squeeze and what we don't wanna do is make, is to squeeze that so that we make bad decisions at this point. So, but, but decisions, you know, you know, you can't just prolong it. It does, you have to kind of, and I, and I know that, you know, maybe with a little bit more information, you might feel more comfortable, but certainly to give us some direction would be great.
Well, I, I wanna jump back in here because, um, you know, just to sort of lay it out bare where I'm, I am, I, I, I completely feel like we are between that rock and hard place from, from the timeline and from the budget and from the site and from all of the things that, we knew we'd get here. You know, we knew in this project, this, this, this moment would happen. The thing that, that concerns me, um, the most about making this decision and really giving you this level of feedback tonight that you're, you need, is that we've only been struggling with this for about two weeks, little, maybe a tiny bit longer. Um, and, and I, you know, I, I, I hear my colleagues saying they're ready to, to commit, but the fact that we, um, you know, and, and Dr. Dixon, I so appreciate your candor in this, that, that, partially because of some leadership loss or change or lack at the CTE level and, and lack of communications and all that, this was not something that was, this was not something that was processed well with the staff. I mean, we can put it, we can put it, you know, we're all in the family here. And I'm, I'm really concerned about making this big of a decision with, in this short of a timeframe. And so I'm, I'm asking you, while I know, Gary, you've, you've asked, or Steve or whoever, any number of times tonight, we need your guidance tonight, we need it tonight, how much more time can you really give us? To put it that bluntly, because I just, you know, obviously, I'm, others are more comfortable with this than I am, but it, it's a really big decision for me to make with, in this amount of time, knowing what I've learned about it.
Before you answer, um, the only reality that you have to interject in here, and I, nobody likes to hear it, but just put it in there, is the season we're in. We're gonna, everybody's going away. I mean, you're not gonna have the staff, uh, working on this now. I mean, force them all to stay for Christmas and New Year's and see how much you get out of that. I mean, so I mean, I just think that when you're, if you're gonna answer this question for Nancy, you gotta factor that in.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna tag in while they come up with their answer. I think what we need to keep in mind with this process, this project from day one has been, this whole effort is a issue of compromises. This is not a greenfield site in Bainbridge where we're starting with scratch, where there's no historic, there's no history, there's an unlimited budget and we have unlimited landscape. None of that. This entire project is a matter of compromise. It's give and take. The architects know, there's a whole host of this, what they're, there's a whole lot of the building we're tearing down or gutting out that I don't, I'm not thrilled with. But I gotta get, you gotta give something up. This entire project is, we have folks who want no parking on the site, everyone should walk to the school, walk to work or ride a bike. And I got staff saying, no, we want every, everyone wants to have a space right next to the door. Can't do that. It's a matter of compromise. I always thought, the initial idea of putting, I, I understand conceptually the idea of having everything from CTE on the Heights campus. Okay, conceptually, that makes sense. On the other hand, it's structurally, it's, it's, it's a challenge. It's always been a challenge. From most of the comments this evening and what the superintendent's been saying, a lot of the issues we're seeing with CTE in the past have been, is it the redheaded stepchild? Has it been administered right? Have we done the spaces right? And it seems, of course, I've only been here a year, so I easily say, no, we, I can blame you guys. It, and, and your predecessors, which would actually be me. We didn't do a good job. We haven't. This is an opportunity because CTE will ostensibly be, be a blank slate. If the administration and the architects are saying this is a better way to do it, I mean, this thing about lunch and breakfast at lunch, that's ridiculous. I mean, you gotta be kidding me. I mean, but that's an administrative component. That's an, and as such, please, I, I, I'm not gonna, this, please. These are things that we can address. What we're really working on this evening and to a degree is physical plant. The superintendent and her staff, they address personnel and that. I mean, and I think Malia's components, questions regarding, and it goes with, with the, uh, the architects. What do we want? Okay, if we're gonna divide the baby in half, how we divide the baby in half? I think that's the issue that staff has to say, hey, the current configuration you guys have come up with or has been recommended, is that the best mix if we're gonna use Taylor? I think that's, that theoretically, that, I think what they really need is, are we going down this path or not? And, and like Cal said, calendar-wise, we don't have a choice because we gotta make decisions. That's what we have to do. And no one's gonna be happy, to be honest. No one's gonna be happy with everything because that shows you that we're ending up with the product that we're gonna have because we don't have an unlimited budget, we don't have unlimited space. It's as simple as that. But I mean, we have, we, basically, we have to pull the trigger. The end of the specifics, that's staff and the architects.
Well, I think there are some realities. AutoTech will not be at the high school next year. We gotta face that as a reality.
Nor will the orchestra.
We don't?
No, I said, nor will the orchestra, nor will the math.
Well, that's right. It's not gonna be there. Where is it gonna be?
Well, it's not gonna be at Wiley either, is what.
Right. Right, it's not gonna be at Wiley. It's not gonna be at either of the two buildings that we might refer to as high schools.
Gotcha.
So where is it gonna be? It's gonna be here. The only question about it is whether we're talking about a long-term solution or a short-term. From the standpoint of how you build it out, I don't know what that means. You know, so some interaction or some information back to us on that, whether those are real options or options that we have in our head, I don't know what the conversation has been with the AutoTech people. But it seems to me that, again, I think there's some conversations that need to take place and I'm hoping that we have enough time to have those conversations.
I, I do wanna comment on the conversations and maybe, Gary, you could follow up on that because I think there's a misconception for the design process. There has been conversations with AutoTech for this location and for AutoTech that was gonna be at the new, the new high school. And there were meetings, am I correct, Gary? There were meetings with staff, the AutoTech staff, and I think there's sort of a misconception out there that we haven't been in discussions. What we haven't been in direct for the design team discussions is on the location, not what is going to be in those, those programs. We know what that program, the AutoTech, and what their wants are and what their needs are, and we've had discussions with them. So where it's located to us is not a, not an issue. But yes, we as a team have not been in discussions at the location. AutoTech did know that they were gonna be here temporarily. They sat down with the architects to do the temporary space. They've sat down with the architects to do the final space. What we're saying is transform what the temporary space is into the final space. All that information is there and we have met with those individuals.
On both cases.
Yes.
The temporary and the final.
Yes, and we have met with pharmacy and we have met with health and we have met with cosmetology. We have met with, and we're gonna be doing more follow-ups with each of those organs, those groups.
So we've done.
That's part of the design process.
We've done everything we can.
Yes, and.
To make sure that we.
And if you want to, I can give you the dates that we met and who we met with.
No, 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 no. I like what Nancy said, we're all family.
Yeah.
You know, we're just trying to see where we are because you're asking for some direction from us.
Right.
And I always say these days, that public bodies are, are not in the business of facilities. When we do facilities, we're stretching ourselves. We're trying to learn and do it at the same time. So for me, I ask questions in that.
No, and I, I appreciate, and Ron, no, I, you know, I really respect that. I, I appreciate that you do ask these questions because I, that needed to be said tonight. And that, and that, if you didn't ask that question, I think there would be a misconception out there that would, there hasn't been, been dialogue between those individuals. And I appreciate that you asked the question.
I didn't get an answer to my question.
That's true.
And the question was?
How much more time?
Right, currently, I'll be honest with you, currently, right now, we're looking at about an eight-week bump. If you delay a decision, you're, that's a, that's gonna be a rolling eight-week bump.
If we delay a decision by, by, no matter how long we delay it, it's eight weeks?
It's gonna be that, whenever you make, whenever you make that decision, you're gonna roll back that time schedule by, by eight weeks. The other thing is that.
Why would that, I don't get that.
In other words.
If we, I'm just making it up, Gary. If we, if we've decided next week, we need eight, to add eight weeks.
I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you an example. Right now, if you made the decision tonight, DDs would not be completed probably until the end of March. That's eight weeks.
Oh.
If you, if you delay making the decision, you're, you're gonna be, you're gonna be into April and then into, you know, the middle. That, what I'm saying is it's gonna roll, it's gonna roll back. The other thing is that if you are intending to make changes and improvements here at, at Delisle, those. at Delisle, those, just let's take, let's say Autotech, I mean, that has to be, if it's a permanent installation, that has to be designed so that it could be completed and occupied by next fall.
All right, right now, we only have a design as, as a temporary. And what we'd like to do is just make it into the permanent, which is, what we always, one of the things that's been directed, is if it becomes permanent, it's at the same level as if it were in the, in the new high school, that it's not less. So we still have to design that, sit down with them, even again, after we've already designed one Autotech at the new high school, we gotta redesign the one that we're gonna be doing here.
Well, I will say this, if we go back and we look at our programs, and we decide that it doesn't make sense to have these three programs, we may need to look at four programs here, or five programs, and kind of reconfigure. That's gonna have some impact on.
Yes.
The design. So I think what we're saying is, perhaps, you know, being more thoughtful about what programs may change both designs. And I don't know what that will look like. Or do, or are we saying we're gonna leave it as is and move forward? So I think from that aspect, you know, we need some more conversation. I'm not sure what that time looks like. We're gonna jump on it first thing tomorrow morning, I'll meet with Dr. Siller tonight, to kind of see what that will look like, so that we're not impacting the timeline greatly. But they, am I correct?
Yeah, we need to know which programs.
Right, 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 right.
The locations are critical.
Because then it will pose for more conversations with the CTE teachers.
Right.
And I will say, even meeting with the two yesterday, they came with some great suggestions about maybe starting school at 7:45 for students, providing lunch. It came with some great recommendations of some things that we can do differently to resolve some of the concerns. So, thank you too for that. So it wasn't just, you know, these things were not done, but here's some solutions that we may look at, knowing that we potentially would be here on this site. So I think we need to kind of talk about that.
I'd have my turn to Gary, though.
Yeah, I just wanna, I, you know, I just wanna clarify that, that the initiative to, to change where these programs were, was not directed by our team. That was.
No, no, we know, we know, we know.
That came from the outside, so.
Right, right.
But.
It would be easy if we could blame you.
[laughing]
But we realize that that's not the case.
But, you know, in, in listening to Malia, you know, she talked about some synergies that, that happened maybe between programs, so it would be appropriate to say, could this work? As I said before, I think architecturally, if you tell us one way or the other, we can, we can make that happen. But it, we, you know, by making it happen, it doesn't solve the issue, the other issues of, in terms of transportation, logistics, class schedules, all that kind of stuff.
Right, right, I agree.
Could we go back to Cal's comment for a minute, because he asked about, when could we have the decision made? We really haven't talked about that. You know, if we delay it tonight, how soon could it be made? Because that's, you said it's eight weeks, so how much time are we tacking on?
Well, the, the eight weeks.
How much are we tacking on?
The eight weeks right now is not impacting the end.
I understand.
Right.
I understand. But we're talking four more weeks beyond that.
Well, that, well, the issue ends up being, if we, if we punt this, you're not gonna have an action from the board until after the holiday. So that's January 6th, correct? If I'm reading the calendar right.
Could we be ready by then?
Well, so the question ends up being, I mean, I think there's, I think the superintendent, I think there's three scenarios. Are we gonna say, no, everything stays in the high school? Are we gonna say, yes, to what you got? Or do we say, yes, to the current idea of the split? Or do we say, yes, to the split, but we wanna tweak the mix?
Yeah.
I mean, the question.
I'm looking at it.
Right, you look at the mix, exactly. The question I would pose is, if we opted to say, okay, we're cool with the split, but we want some time to, to examine the split, how does that impact your timelines then? When would you have to say, okay, guys, we need, okay, we're.
It does.
We're futzing, but, oh, no, we're futzing, when you guys, okay, it's gonna be this program versus that, when do you need to know that? Or is that, you need to, I mean, is that a month?
See, there, the problem with that is there are some trailing things. If you look at this slide, because if you're talking about the hybrid geothermal, you know, the.
If he doesn't know what the layout is, we can't do, we can't do the mechanical. He doesn't know, because the layout is, if you don't know, if the programs are gonna be flipping around between one, one building to the other. Right now, he's got a layout that's based on certain programs at, at the high school, and certain programs which are defined.
Right.
But if you redefine those, would you put those in those locations on that floor plan? Probably not.
It's not gonna have any impact on geothermal. Geothermal's a well building.
Well, no, it impacts the engineers to do their work. So, so the engineers really can't get started till they know what, what spaces are where, and what types of spaces.
Let's walk this back. If we, if we say yes to the split, and we said, okay, but we'd like our staff to, to take one more pass at figuring out what goes where, when, I mean, is that, because look, the reality is, the district's closed next week, right?
I'm, I'm gonna reverse the question. You tell us how much time you need to make that decision.
Yes.
If you say, if you say it's gonna take two weeks, then I can say, we can try and improve so that, so that it's, it's a six-week bump instead of an eight-week bump, and we don't, we don't lose anything. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna commit to that, because if you, if you don't make that decision, then I've hung myself out again.
Well, and I don't want, look, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I am not about to jeopardize the entire project and the bud, and the timeline, the construction, and the budget over one thing. We have to make a decision. That's what we were elected to do. If, even if people in the audience don't like it, that's too bad. We're not here to make friends, we're here to make decisions. And we have to give these folks direction. And as much as I don't like any of the options I have in front of me, we have to pick the one that has the best interest for the building as a whole, or the system as a whole, I should say. That's what we have to do.
Well, I think the time factor is, well, I don't know what, what it is.
We were hoping you had it.
Well, I think I had it, but I realized that, what, at what point do we start modifying this place for Autotech?
Since possible.
Pretty soon.
Pretty soon.
Because it has to be ready, of course.
When?
Well.
But, well, let me ask you this.
If we say go tonight, they would.
Is there some enabling things that we can do? That won't, that we could do, whether it's permanent or temporary?
No.
No? That's because we gotta get the design done before we can do any of it.
We've got, they've gone as far as they can go, at this point. They've done all that. All the stuff that they could do before you make your decision, they've pretty much done. They, they need to know now, is it there? Is it permanent, or not?
Well, I agree with Cal. I'm gonna see how he's gonna vote.
We're not, we're not doing a vote.
No, we're not doing a vote.
If you want to vote, let's take a vote. I know, but, no, but, my point being is, it's 9:20. I mean, we could be here till 11:30 if we keep doing this back and forth. We can make a decision.
Or, or as Gary asks, can you tell us how much more time you really feel you need to make this decision?
I'm obviously the holdout on this. And I, and, and what I wanna say is that, I don't believe that there's anything that, even in a week or two weeks, that could be, that could change this significantly enough that we could fit necessarily everything in the high school. So I know that, that people, that, that we probably wouldn't, people probably wouldn't be happy to hear that, but I do, I do feel, you know, Steve, I'm not, I'm not.
No.
I don't wanna contradict, but I do wanna say that the bubbling that I've heard is that the communications had, have not happened with all of the CTE folks. Please, just, just let me make my case, okay? In the way that, that people would have liked, and I have, I have chalked that up to the lack of leadership in that program, in the overall program area, and not to any of that intent or, or anything.
No, I completely understand.
And so I think that this has come, even though this was, this idea of, of splitting permanently bubbled from the administration and from some members of the community who said, we don't like what we're seeing, oh my gosh, what are you doing with CT at the high school? It's not, it's not good enough, why don't you give us more space and keep it.
Right.
At, at Delisle. I, I don't feel like there's been as much time to process some of those other pieces. Now, if what you're telling me is, we don't even have time to do that, because that decision of which program is in which building even has to be made immediately, I, I think we probably have to then support the decision and demand that it be implemented with the, in, in, in the best way possible. And I, and it, it pains me to say that, especially because of the issue 81 piece of this, that I'm really troubled by.
So, you have a sense of how much time you need?
I mean, I think I just said, I, I don't know that more, that more ti, the administration needs the time to determine which programs really should go where, unless you feel that that has been exhausted.
I've not looked at that. I've not looked at changing programs to, from another, from other programs from the high school to this building.
Oh, I understand that, because that's, but I'm saying, you felt comfortable last week making a recommendation as to which programs stay here, or, and which programs are at the high school.
Correct.
And do you feel that there's any additional information, conversations, communications, and processing that would help you to feel more comfortable with that, or make a different decision?
Great question. I, I believe anytime you allow for more processing and bringing more stakeholders involved is a good thing, and bringing all the CTE teachers possibly, programs together, and having a dialogue about what would make more, what could be different about the plan if we, if we could, is not a bad idea. But I can live with what we, with the decision the board makes and move forward, and, and as, as Cal stated, you know, we're making sure that it's a maximum program. I believe that the administration can make some tweaks. We can provide the transportation, we can adjust our calendar, our time to make sure that kids get here, that we don't have a loss of instructional time, we can have lunch and breakfast on-site. Those are tweaks that we can make to make sure that, that it's a seamless, you know. How do we, the other pieces is, how do we make sure that teachers have collaboration, and all of those things, that we have to make sure that we're, we're really intentional about those spaces as we grow other programs here. So, can it be done? Yes. Can it be done with fidelity? Yes. Can we, can it be done with, with teachers' input at, at this juncture? Yes, it could, it could.
Do you feel like you need more time?
I would like to have more time to pull the team together and, and instruction, and with edge services, really looking at it.
Then I think we gotta do it with more time.
But what would that time?
How much time?
How much?
We're talking about the end of the week? I mean, it's, I don't mean that in a harsh way, I just mean like, because that's, that's still before the holidays, that's still viable, in terms of.
Well, a little bit this way, you're the superintendent, right?
Right.
They work for you, right?
Right.
Then they, oh, no, I hate, I don't wanna play this, if you, I mean, obviously, Wednesday's tough. But you have, in my opinion, to the, I would suggest, that pull the team together, bounce it around, meet with these folks, they don't wanna drive up from Yonkers Town, but meet with them, and bang it out by the end of the week, because if we don't have an action by the end of the week, we lose at least two weeks, and then we're adding two more, two, three, four weeks under the schedule, and suddenly, the whole thing's behind.
So the first week, the Friday, Steve, Steve, January 9th?
Oh, no, I'm saying this, I'm saying this week.
He's mentioning this week.
This week, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Help me with the process you're recommending.
Yeah.
You're, you're suggesting that the superintendent pulls together team, comes up with an idea, and then we're going to tonight say, whatever the idea is, we're okay, and we're, is that what you're suggesting?
No, you might as well not do it if you're asking the.
Yeah, I mean.
Seventy-two kids.
Right, and that's not what I'm even suggesting. I'm saying that when we think about the programs that are here currently, that we're saying stay, and thinking about maybe what other programs could come, that would take more time to look at. It, it will. It wouldn't be me sitting and saying, okay, these five programs, this, this place switcheroo, because these make better sense.
Wait, 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 now, how do we get, how do we get to these pick? I mean, how do we, I, I, I'm a little frustrated, because it's, basically, we were pitched to do something, and what was this, why did we come up with the recommendation for what was gonna stay and what was gonna go? I'm, I thought that there was some thought behind how we came up with the picks. What was the, I mean, for what was gonna stay at Taylor, what was gonna be at the high school? How we, what was, I mean, if, if that wasn't, if that wasn't headed foundation, then what was, what was the foundation before? But obviously, Autotech was always gonna be here.
Correct, and other programs that were here will remain here, with the exception of cosmetology.
Well, last week, cosmetology was because of accessibility and synergy with stuff. And from the synergy from the map, it's sort of, the, with the fashion component, that sort of made sense, I got, I got that.
And these two current programs work together, so that makes sense for those two to stay.
Right, so that, I mean, it, it's to a degree, it's like, okay, we have, there's this, this, there's this matchup or that matchup. So it really ends up being, are we just gonna discuss or debate another matchup? Because, again, I'm looking at the clock, and I look at these guys, and these guys wanna move forward, and we have to move forward. And that's, I, my fear is, we spend a month, we lose four weeks, or three weeks, and we're still in the same position. I think that it's programmatic, it's, I think we can tweak it and make it work. I've listened, because we can't, the issue is this, we can't lose any more time.
Any thoughts? Eric? Nancy?
You know, I, I, I've said where I sit with this, and my discomfort with this. I, I, I so appreciate the, the work that you have done, Tully said, to, to try to make this, try to make this work, as you said earlier, in terms of coming into something that was less gelled than, than it should be. And I think if, if there's any lesson to us, it's that, there are a lot of lessons to us, but one of the lessons is that the, that that lack of leadership and strategic vision for where CTE needs to be has hurt us in this process. But I do believe that you have the right stuff and the sincerity to make this a, this isn't a, oh my gosh, it's the program that we don't have a lot of support for, so I'm gonna split them up because they're not gonna complain. That is not, I've never heard anything near that from you. In fact, I've heard you regularly, and through this beginning, talk about strategic planning, elevate, see, your support for, for needing to do a much better job than we have as a district on CTE. So I'm, I guess I'm gonna hold, hold you to that, and, and look forward to working with you on that.
I think on this piece, that the board is prepared to accept the recommendation from the team, and suggests that you move forward on it. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Then it's time for the board's president's report. I just wanna thank the team for the work that was involved in getting approval from the planning commission and the, and the city council in University Heights. So I'd like to publicly say thanks a lot. And I think that was hard work, and it shows what can, what can be done, when you really get in the room and work together. So thanks. And the board members too, the board members are really, did a good job of working with city council. Okay. Any unfinished business?
Boy, is that a loaded question. Tonight.
We, we finished that. We, we finished that.
Okay.
Any new business? What about committee reports?
I'll save mine for next month.
Sounds good. Correspondences and announcements? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Koval.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.